Good evening, everyone. We're going to start the Capitola City Council meeting. And welcome, everyone. We're so glad that you're here tonight to be here in person. And thank you, everyone at home that's watching. We really appreciate your interest in the city activities. Please feel free to call any of us anytime, at home or here. Please feel free to email us anytime. We love your suggestions and your thoughts. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Bottorff.
Here.
And Mayor Harland.
Here. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business tonight is a presentation of the Oath of Office for swearing in and of a standby, City Councilmember Linda.
We will be swearing in Marilyn Warder as the standby council member representing Councilmember Peterson.
I'll fist in your left hand. Raise your right hand.
Aye, Marilyn Warder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
The duties upon which.
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
For the audience members, these are council members that each council member designates in case there's an emergency and the city needs to have an emergency meeting and we can't make it, that we've designated someone to hold an emergency council meeting. Next item was Report of Close Session.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Harland and members of the City Council. There were two items on this evening's Close Session agenda. First was an item of real property negotiations, and that was with regard to the lease of the city facility or the property that on which the city facilities are located at Jade Street Park, 4400 Jade Street. Parties were SoCal Union Elementary School District and City of Capitola. Second item was a liability claim, the claim of Sandra Jones. That item is on your consent agenda for action tonight. There was no reportable action on the real property matter.
Thank you. Additional materials, are there any additional materials, Linda?
We received four items. They are available in the back and were distributed to council and agenda packet recipients. One is for Item 10A. It is a letter withdrawing the application being appealed pending a new design. We have two items for 10B, a reformatted page 222 from the packet, and a revised library tentative funding chart. And finally, for Item 10D, we have an email regarding expanding the vacation overlay.
Great, thank you very much. Next item is additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any tonight?
Staff has no changes outside of the recommendation to continue the first item on your general business this evening as the appeal has been withdrawn.
So if there's anyone here for Item 10A, that item has been withdrawn and that, so we won't be taking any public testimony about that tonight. It's an appeal of a planning commission decision for a new two-story single-family home at 105 Sacramento. So that will not be heard tonight. So if you're here for that, you can stay for the rest of it or come back another time if that comes back to us. Next item is for is public comments. So if there's anyone that would like to speak to us tonight on any item not on the agenda, please come up. If it's on the agenda, please wait till we get to it. And everyone's welcome to speak during that time, even if it doesn't say public hearings. We welcome public comments on any items on the agenda. Good evening.
Mayor, City Council people, you have some documents I put before you there. Both your city manager and city attorney apparently are acting by extreme malfeasance. And the reason I say that is I've allowed this body to relinquish your authority to the regional agency of Ambag. No constituent votes for a member of Ambag, yet the people are subject to their regulations, their taxes and fines. And this is all done without their knowledge or approval. The Bill Gates owns newspaper, the Sentinel, the Mercury, and the Monterey Herald have a monopoly and are in favor of this program of transferring authority to regional agencies to promote a North American union, pretty much like the European Union. Many countries in the European Union never voted to be in it, and they're trying to get out, and they're having trouble doing it. This is a stealth program that's endorsed, apparently. Your city manager and your city attorney, again, aren't warning you when you have representatives attending Ambag. You are not clear. These people out here probably have never heard of Ambag or know the power that it has. You're destroying self-government by design. The city council bypasses the public. It has, the Ambag has partnerships with ICLI, which is a front for the World Bank and the United Nations. That should be a crime against the Logan Act. The Ambag chairman, Bruce McPherson, has received thousands of dollars from a Chinese communist double agent. McPherson has worked under Leon Panetta in the California Forward, which was set up by David Rockefeller, in wasting his plan, is actually a coup d'etat. The public must understand, one, Panetta Gate, in which Leon Panetta, as congressman, sent military and policy information to a communist espionage agent associated with four spy rings. They must also understand Panetta Gate, how that has control over many of the policies and is a virtual blackmail system that's set up, that is used against both political parties. The political machine in the Ambag area works by stealth. They plan to violate self-government. One particular thing about Ambag is that PG&E runs about a third of it. They pay for it. On the paper I have here, they have a cartel in which they control the utility rates. And of course, California has one of the highest utility rates. One of the first logos on here is ICLI. ICLI is, again, a front for the World Bank and the United Nations, and they're setting our policy instead of you. You're not defending the people out here against this intrusion. The other one on here is the Institute for Local Government, set up in 1955 by McGeorge Bundy, a member of Skull and Bones, as part of its foundation to set up a world government. You're being handed laws that are called harmonizing. And what it is, is you're taking away the checks and balances and preparing for a North American union when comes a crisis.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Barbara Bush here. Wow, we're in trouble. Thank you, Gary. The reign of terror has begun. We have no voice, we have no choice. We've seen what happens when our representatives, quote, "serve us." We end up with someone like Donald Trump, who advocates lies under oath on national television, hatred, deception, fear, conflicts of interest, and many, many more to add to the list. This directly affects us here in Capitola because it makes this activity okay. That, well, if the head of our country can do it, why can't we do it here in Capitola? Why can't we treat each other this way? It really lowers the bar. And our constitution was created to stop and prevent this, and it's clearly not working. So because this is rippling down to us here on a local level, it's really critical that we put a stop to this madness and get our representatives to advocate for us, as you've just heard. So we must hold all levels of government accountable, the shadow government, the transnational, the national, regional, state, and local levels. And if you don't get what you want and demand, demand the change, and then if not, demand the exit of the representatives. That includes all you sitting here today. This is a time to stay calm, get informed, organize, mobilize. This is going to take a lot of work among all of us. Call your reps every day. Diane Feinstein and Camila Harris. Feinstein's line has been busy for two weeks. The White House has shut down their intake line. They're just getting inundated with calls. They're now saying, just call the Trump Tower facilities directly. Voice your opinion, don't settle for this nonsense because we deserve better. And we need unity and common ground. That's all, that's a very key element to this, too. And fight for what really matters, safety, health, standards. I'm about out of time, but let's, let's hold everybody accountable here, at least, if we can't do it on a national level, at least here in Capitola. Let's set the highest standards that we can. And not cower to the big corporate powers such as Verizon, who has bullied this council before. It's time that we really take a stand because one more day, as you can see of Donald Trump, and one day he does an extensive amount of damage. There were 10,000 to 18,000 people that marched this weekend. That's a lot of angry, unhappy people, very, very concerned. I didn't see one television camera. I saw a lot of phones and text messaging and iPhones, but I didn't see the media representing us. And that's very sad because we're on our own, folks, and it's up to us to change it.
Thank you. Next. Good evening. You can sign in if you like, if you'd like to have your name spelled correctly in the minutes.
All right. My name's Carl Schuber. I'm a resident of Capitola on Topaz Street, 4730 Topaz Street. And I'm here representing the citizens on that street. We just presented a petition of about 38 or 40 signatures from residents between 45th and 49th, and eight of us are here tonight. We met with Steve Jespers and the Traffic Commission earlier and talked about an issue. And he suggested that we come here and present it to you as well. So basically, the concern that we have is the amount of pass-through traffic that goes through Topaz Street. It's become a main corridor. It's people that are cutting through, coming down Bromer, down Jade, down Topaz, cut down 49th to Wharf Road or down into the Village. And it reverses in the morning. So we've got a situation of a very narrow, crowded residential street with people walking with strollers, with their dogs, with their children, bicycling. And you have two-way traffic plus parked cars on a 40-foot wide street, and they're barreling through because they're late for work or they want to get home after work. And it just goes on and on. We've been dealing with this and trying to find ways and people to talk to, and it ultimately comes down to you. When I talked to Steve earlier tonight with the group, you know, he suggested that, that we could look at possible ways to mitigate things with, whether it be one-way streets or reconfiguring things, but, but some changes to be made. But first, I would ask that we just enforce the current laws. People come around these corners and they don't stop at stop signs. They run them or they come through without looking. And I had, I had my car sideswiped two weeks ago, coming around 47th Street onto Topaz, and somebody barrels around and takes out the side of my car. You know, in this, these are the types of things that happen. Thank God there wasn't a kid there, you know? There was, my neighbor has a two-year-old across the street. You know, so the situation needs to be remedied. And what I'd like to do is to get some support, some support from you as the council to do something about it. That street was never designed for that type of pass-through traffic. The main corridors on that are 45th, 47th, and 49th. It's not those jewel streets. And, and it's an issue, and it's a dangerous issue, and somebody's going to get hurt. And, and I just don't want to see that to happen, and you don't want to see that to happen. So I'd like your support for when we go and talk to Steve and his group about coming up with some possible novel things, you know? And it might be, as Steve suggested, a one-way street. And it doesn't have to be forever. We could try it out for six months or something like that to see if it helps the problem. So anyway, thank you. I'm out of time, and I appreciate any thought you put into it. You know, we, we want this to be a good, safe community for our residents as well.
Thank you. Next.
Mayor, perhaps we could have a report back from the Parking and Traffic on this issue? They had a lot more time to talk about it tonight and agendaize it in the future agenda.
Right. And Steve, I'd like you a copy of the petition.
There's one that's been.
The clerk has one, so.
Okay, thanks.
That's what we all want, is a safe, healthy community. Earlier, you heard a speaker talking about this new administration. I was thinking, an excellent source of information, of independent radio, without advertisements, is KPFA. Those of you who have computers, it's kpfa.org or 97.5 FM. And you hear the interviews going on for the cabinet that's being established, et cetera. Another source of information that I would like the City Council to contact is called CELDEF. It stands for Community Environmental Legal Defense Fund, celdf.org. And what they do is they work with communities to establish rights-based charters and ordinances based on the rights of the community to self-governance and to not be harmed, the rights of the people over corporate rights. So for instance, some of the examples are banning fracking or injection wells in communities, banning factory hog farming that pollutes the rivers. They also work on establishing the rights of nature, like here, property is considered, people can do whatever they want with it or to spoil it, you know, like in Standing Rock and many places. So this group, I was listening to a tape of Thomas Lindsay, who's the president of Community Environmental Legal Defense Fund, talking about how they work with some city council members in other jurisdictions. So I will give you some copies of this newsletter. And I think this, this is critical because it's not just regulating something, or, you know, I worked in Watsonville by fields of pesticides, that's why I have tremors, I'm pretty sure, in part. So instead of saying that you can permit this pesticide, or this pesticide, or this amount, or regulate, it's prohibiting or banning that which harms the community and harms nature. It's a very different approach, and it's a legal approach that I think we can use. And somebody thought of this statement about regulation, and I'll quote it, "Regulation is a system of permitting and perpetuating corporate harm. Prohibition prevents poisoning." We're thinking about pesticides, I'll leave you with this. Thank you. Please do contact CELDEF.
Very much. Next. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Harland and the City Council. My name is Mel Vento, and I live at 4775 Topaz. I know some of the City Council. We met earlier, as my neighbor Carl explained. We represent the citizens on Topaz between 45th and basically 49th. The reason that we're concerned, I have been in to speak with the police department. We had the former police chief in to meet with us and the neighbors, probably about a year ago. I've been down to the police department. I, we have met with the Traffic Commission, Parking and Traffic Commission, tonight was a second point, and they recommended we come in here. It's become very dangerous, that pass-through traffic, while the speed limit is 25 miles per hour. 25 miles per hour works fine when you have the space for it, but it's an unsafe speed on our street, and it doesn't take much observance to recognize that it's an issue. We do have children, and I wanted to read a letter from one of my neighbors. She lives on, she says, "My name is Dana Ingersoll. I live at 4705 Topaz Street on the corner of 47th Avenue with my husband and two-year-old son. I wish I could be here in person, but I have to put my son to bed at this time. I have spent a lot of time walking around neighborhood with a stroller the past two years. Besides 45th Avenue and Topaz Street, all of the other streets in the jewel box are quiet and have little traffic. I've even seen kids playing basketball in the middle of Opal Street during rush hour. Topaz Street is the major pedestrian route for people walking back and forth to the Village and Beach. It has also become the major commute route for people avoiding Highway One and crossing town. Because there are no sidewalks, the street is narrow and lined on both sides with parked cars. It has become very dangerous for pedestrians. At morning and evening rush hours, the street is congested with speeding cars and seems to be getting worse. I feel very sad that I can't let my son out of my front door due to the likelihood that he will dart into the street and be hit by a car. The visibility for drivers is awful. All pets, children, and other pedestrians on both blocks of Topaz Street are at high risk of injury. We ask that you consider new traffic restrictions that would discourage commuters from using these routes daily. Our safety is at stake here. Thank you for your serious consideration of this important matter. Sincerely, Dana Ingersoll, Marcus Viscovi, and their son Enzo." And, and just a note for myself, my husband and I, Rick, who's here in the audience, we walk constantly. We walk our dog. Most of you have probably seen us with our lab. We're on the streets and we're very aware. We would ask the council and the mayor to get out and walk more. The enforcement in the city, there is an issue with people running stop signs with speeding, and we think that, quite frankly, maybe perhaps a one-way street on Topaz, but maybe just having enforcement or some awareness, some more visibility of our, of our police might help. We're just asking for some help. We will come back at the next meeting and ask for some suggestions from you.
Thank you very much. I think the suggestions should come from the Parking and Traffic Committee. That's their area of expertise. They spend a lot of time studying these issues throughout the city, and I think they might come up with some good suggestions.
Okay. And we'll also, we will also come back with some suggestions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next. Please sign in if you'd like to have your name spelled correctly for the minutes.
Take me a while to get there. So whatever Marilyn said, I agree with it 100%. I've been, for the past, I don't know, maybe 10 years, over time, I've been feeling the effects of this electromagnetic radiation damaging my body and various things. Now I've got like, I'm gathering fluid in my legs and my hip is going bad, and I've got neuropathy, and I just, I just, I just have to think that it's because of the, all this different radiation and all these frequencies everywhere. A lot of people aren't simple, maybe they're not, maybe they're not sensitive to it, or they cover it up with drugs so they don't feel the effects of it anymore. But God helped Verizon in their souls. I don't know how much money that they can make if that's going to help them buy back their souls. I, I know that we have to, I lost a house because of a microwave tower that went up next to my house. I couldn't work anymore. I lost the house. I was homeless for three years. I'm living out of my car. And so now I'm facing all kinds of medical problems. I won't even go into all of them, but this electromagnetic radiation is very, it's irritating. And I, I look around in society, and the whole atmosphere of society is like a very contentious, people are fighting in the streets, and they're calling each other liars, and they're twisting words, and they're just, all this tension. There's got to be a different way that we can communicate. I mean, personally, I would like that if everybody was, was, what do you call it, telepathic, although I don't think I'd want to read the mind of some terrorist or pedophile of people. But I mean, it's damaging and it's very, it's very horrible, and I would just like to have you take a look at the metaphysical, larger picture from the higher view of what it's doing to society and what it's doing to people individually, like me, who can't afford medical bills, so I have to kind of make do with what I can. So anyway, it's very damaging and it causes lots of problems that people don't associate with the convenience of being able to look up a restaurant. Anyway, I don't know what the, what's even at issue here with, with regard to the legislation, but I can't, I can't help but agree with Shakespeare that we should kill all the lawyers. And the way they twist words and, I mean, it astonished me when I found out that the ordinance in, with regard to this, is not allowed to take into account the health effects that it has on people. What the hell is that? Please, somebody explain it to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Write a letter to your congressperson. That's their, that was their decision.
Huh?
Write a letter to your congressperson. That was their decision. Would someone else like to speak?
Don't you guys have, don't you guys have some kind of influence over what happens locally?
Not medically, no. Would someone else like to speak? Then we'll bring it back to the council, and this is time for City Council comments and treasurer comments and staff comments. So Ed, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Jacque, do you have anything?
I'm good also.
Mike.
I have a couple of things. Anyone who was in or around this area the last two weeks realizes exactly what kind of exposure we had to storms. We watched a lot. We're just barely drying out now. And anyone who was near the coast during the most recent one knew what it had the potential to do to our wharf. Our wharf took a serious beating, and I was almost worried that we passed Measure F a couple of years too late. But it seems we missed on this one, or it missed us. I think that the whole council needs to take the last few weeks of weather to heart, and when it comes down to us getting the design and the rebuilding of our wharf, we ought to spare no speed and decisiveness in getting that to happen. The Public Safety Foundation will be attending in two weeks the Fallen Officers Ball at the fundraiser at the Coconut Grove. We are supporters of that. The Community Safety Foundation donates 2,500 every year, and it's a tremendous organization that does a lot of good for families that are left in the worst possible situation. And on a lighter note, we selected the bands for this summer, this last week, and everyone's going to have a good time. I'll see you all out there.
Peterson, do you have any comments?
Yeah, just a couple, a couple of quick things. I would also like to echo the. I would also like to echo the support for the Fallen Officers Foundation. They were very supportive of my family when my grandfather passed away, and so it was a wonderful organization to support. Also, last, last week, I attended the League of California Cities Training for New Council Members and Mayors. And just a cool kind of fact that I found out was, we had the opportunity to meet briefly with State Senate President Pro Tem Kevin DeLeon, and he told us that his children learned to swim here in Capitola. And so I thought that was kind of neat to learn that.
That's all. And Secretary of Education Tom Torleksen, former Assemblyperson and former local elected official also, has come down to the Wharf-Dwarf race every year. I've seen him there before.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other comments? I have a few. We had the Mayor's Select Committee meeting, which is a committee that meets a couple of times a year because there are a couple of countywide committees that this committee appoints a representative to. So the first thing we heard was a report by Deanna Sesms, our League of California Cities staff person. League of California Cities is our professional organization of all the 470-some cities in California. So as you can imagine, they're working on some serious issues up in Sacramento. The primary one is transportation infrastructure. As you know, the state roads, freeways, highways, bridges, et cetera, have not gotten any substantial amount of monies for repair in many, many, many years, and the gas tax is not working, and so the legislators are finally taking it seriously, and so they're working on that. So they're going to try to provide some sort of funding source for streets, bridges, transportation, transit, water-related needs, sewer, stormwater, flood control, beach erosion, et cetera, including maintenance and construction. So they're not sure exactly what vehicle they're going to use yet for that, but that's a big topic for the state and for the league. The second one is to develop a realistic response to the homeless crisis, and they're trying to work on increasing state and federal funding to support additional shelter services throughout California. And CECAC, the California State Supervisors Association, is also working on this together. And then the third one is to improve the affordability of workforce housing and secure additional funds for affordable housing. As you know, since redevelopment funds went away, cities and counties don't have that fund anymore to, to work on building, developing new affordable housing. So we're in a big bind in California, as you know, in many, many areas, especially the Bay Area and now this area, in trying to find work. Affordable housing sometimes to people means housing for poor people and slums, and poor housing, and, you know, crummy housing, or something like that. And what we mean by affordable housing, we're going to start calling workforce housing. It's housing for the workforce, for everybody that works in our community, that needs a decent place to live. So they're going to, anyway, they're going to, since we don't have redevelopment, they're going to, on state level, somehow, they're going to try to work on that. And then sentencing laws and medical services and some other things. So they handed a, they gave us a handout on this, which I'll pass out to the other council members, so you can see this. They have new officers. Cynthia Matthews from Santa Cruz is their new president, and they will be having a meeting on March 13th, and we can all carpool and go to their meetings if we can. That would be great. So they did appoint a representative from Watsonville and Santa Cruz to the Air Pollution Control District. We appointed Oscar Rios, new mayor of Watsonville, to the Air Control Board, and Sandra Brown, Sandy Brown from the City of Santa Cruz, to another seat on that board that was available. And we got an update on the Community Choice Energy Project, which is, will be coming back before this board in the community for a community energy project that's very interesting. We talked about PERS, and everybody got very depressed about that, about our PERS rates and our increase in retirement costs that none of us can afford. We're looking at an increase of $1 million over the next few years, and county's looking at $1 million right away, and Santa Cruz and Watsonville just doesn't know what they're going to do. It's tough. And then I gave an update on Capitola's library plans, and so that was fun to talk about, our planning, and I asked them if they had any advice for me. The county and Scotts Valley and Watsonville that did libraries, I said, "Tell me something that you wish you had done that you didn't do, or tell me something that you did do that you wish you hadn't done." And Scotts Valley said, "No, we're really, really happy with ours. We can't think of anything." County Live Oaks said, "Be nice to have room to grow." They don't have any room to grow on that site down there at the lagoon. And Watsonville said, "Be nice to connect the front door with the parking lot and the back door." So you better that library, you know what I mean? So, no, they all, they, you know, they, they didn't have, you know, too many, too many large things, but we talked about that. That was good. Just for the, for the audience, the Friends, the new Friends of the Library, Capitola Group is meeting this Saturday at 9:30 at the library, so if you're interested in joining that group, it's a wonderful, fun group, and 9:30 at the library. The Sanitation District met last week, and I asked them for a 10-year plan, and so Steve Jesperk has a copy of that, if any of you want to look at that, to see where projects are in Capitola. Not that it's, we're going to exactly follow that plan, because in the Sanitation District, sometimes we have emergencies, and so we have to spend our money on that. Project and other things get bumped to other years, but at least give, give you an idea of when things are going to happen in Santa Cruz. We have a lot of old lines, and they need to be replaced, so we're going to be doing that. I have an announcement about Veterans Center in Santa Cruz at the Santa Cruz Public Library, a new veterans information center. And it's going to be open Mondays from 1:00 to 3:00, and Wednesdays from 10:00 to 12:00. It's going to provide trained volunteers to connect veterans and their families with local, state, and federal resources regarding education, employment, housing, health, disability, and other benefits that may be available. In addition, there's a collection of books and other resources, and access to computer equipment for extended periods in order to complete online applications and do research. So great new research for, resource for veterans. I've been following this issue of the mobile home park in Palo Alto that the owner wanted to close. It was a little bit similar situation to ours, and so this is just an update on that. It's a 400-person mobile home park in downtown Palo Alto. I'm not sure how many homes are on the site, but the Housing Authority has come up with $36 million to buy Buena Vista Mobile Home Park in Palo Alto based on an appraisal of fair market value, and they appraised it at the fair market value for housing in Palo Alto, so you can imagine. The Housing Agency's Board of Directors unanimously voted to make an offer to the mobile home park to preserve the site as affordable housing for 400 mostly low-income residents. Though the Housing Authority only is interested in acquiring about 212,000 square feet of the property, they appraised the entire site, which also includes a building with four small businesses and a gas station. If the property were able to be redeveloped into its highest and best use, which the appraisal company determined was a residential development of 15 units per acre instead of a mobile home park, the area would be worth about $42 million, minus the cost of removing the mobile homes and the value of the land. It was calculated $35 million. Anyway, it looks like it's going to happen, so it's really, really remarkable, but it's also really, really expensive, and there's no way that we would have ever been able to do anything like that. So kind of just the end of a, of a chapter in Capitola. The next thing is that I was, wanted to put an item on the next agenda. I have a list of the community groups, and I wanted to pass it out at the next meeting and have everybody choose five that they'd like to look into between now and the budget study sessions, so you'd have an opportunity to go visit them and see what they're all about, if you want to, you don't have to. But that way we'll get as many covered as possible, and if people have other questions, they can ask that council member who went to go visit that, did a site visit, and so forth. So if you're interested in that, I'm going to put that on the next agenda, if you'd like to pick five or six that you'd like to go visit, and if you don't, that's, that's okay. We'll, we'll cover that, but it'd be good to go into the budget sessions with a little more firsthand experience of some of the groups, I think. And the last one is I want everybody to look at their calendars and look, find a date when we can have an informal lunch for a little team building. So maybe at the end of the meeting, we can talk about this again, and just look at your calendar and see if there's a Friday afternoon, maybe at lunchtime, we can have an informal lunch, and just do a little, little team workshop for, for about hour, hour and a half, and just have a little workshop, and, and start off with the new council, not the goal-setting session, but just rather informal. So we look at our calendars. So that's all I have. Staff, yes?
I'm sorry, Stephanie reminded me of something that I'm going to be doing pretty soon. So about two meetings ago, I think you might recall, we had a presentation from the Sanitation District. They planned a bunch of improvements at the Nob Hill Pump Station with intent of improving delivery, and also to reduce the smell that pervades that whole area, including residences. So I went to the last meeting that Stephanie referenced, and I asked if I could get a tour. So I want to get a tour of that facility, get a better idea of the plans that are being proposed, and do a little more questioning. I couldn't really take the opportunity. So I'd like to invite any of the fellow board members here, if you'd like to do that, let me know, and if anyone in public would like to go. I know there's a number of people I've talked to in the neighborhood who are very concerned. So just get to me and try to figure out a date that works. Thanks.
It won't take very long. It's not that large of a facility, so, yeah. I mean, it's not an all-day thing, it's a pretty quick thing. The other thing is I just want to let the council members know, we get these alerts from Deanna sometimes that says, "Please respond to these bills." I'm going to go ahead and do it unless anybody has any objections. Call me and let me know if you want to put it on the agenda, but otherwise, I'll just go ahead and do these as they come through, because they're consistent, it's league policy, they're consistent with pretty much what we're doing, and so I'll just go ahead and do that unless there's any, anything you want to talk about. Okay. Sorry that took so long. Next item is boards and commission appointments. The first one is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, treasures reports. Are they, treasures report, please, I'm sorry.
Just a couple of quick comments. I've been going over the check registers and signing those off, and getting in New World software to look at the detailed invoices and make sure everything is appropriate. And I want to thank Mark Welsh and Jamie Goldstein for putting up with my questions, because I had a lot of them, and they were very thorough in their answers, and I know I interrupted them several times during the day. But one thing I haven't had access to yet is the payroll information, and that is because of a software licensing issue, the, again, on New World, apparently, you need a special seat to get access to that tab, and so we're, I've been, Mark and I have been trying to do a workaround, so we wouldn't have to go through that expense of trying to get a new software seat or anything like that. I know those can be expensive. So hopefully, next week, we'll get someone out who can help me look at the raw data via a spreadsheet activity, and we'll be able to avoid any unnecessary costs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other staff comments?
Madam Mayor, members of the council. First off, I'd just like to thank the council. I missed the last meeting. I'd like to thank the council for giving me the space to take care of what I needed to take care of with my shoulder. I also want to thank my department heads and the city attorney and everyone else for covering for me last, last meeting. I really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Then the next item is appointments to boards. So we have open city and county boards.
Yes, the first item we have are the appointments to the Art and Cultural Commission. The committee was able to meet last week with two applicants. Would you like to run with that?
We met with, yes, two at-large applicants, and we found them both not only worthy, but able to be on the Art and Cultural Commission, and they're, they're very excited about it, and I highly recommend that the council adopt them as at-large members. We are still looking for a professional artist to be on the Art and Cultural Commission, so that position is still open. And this is not necessarily someone who is an artist, but an artist professional is someone who makes their living in the art business. If you own a gallery, if you own a factory like Roy Johnson Lighting, or Annie Glass, or something like that, some artistic endeavor where you make your day-to-day living, not necessarily. We already have someone on there who is the artist representative, Kim Hogan, and we're looking for someone to take the place of Roy Johnson, who was from Johnson's Art Studios. So we're looking for someone in the community. Please step up. It's the most fun committee we have in the whole city. I guarantee it. So I recommend the, the recommendation from the Art and Cultural Commission.
So the motion would be to continue recruitment of the art professional and to recommend Kim to be on, Kim Hogan to be on the Arts Council of Santa Cruz County.
That's correct.
And the two applicants that applied for the city Arts Commission to be appointed.
That is correct.
Is that your, is that your motion?
Yes.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next one is the Ad-Hoc Homeless Governance Study Committee.
We have two other, actually. We still need a, to address the council member who will serve on the Commission on the Environment. At the last meeting, council member Bertrand deferred to see what his schedule would allow, and we also need an alternate to the Regional Transportation Commission.
My, my schedule is fine with that. So I will accept that.
You will be able to accept that. And is there a council member who is interested in taking the alternate spot?
And Madam Mayor, there is a reason why I declined the alternate position, and it only had to do with the fact that when we bring someone in as the alternate to the RTC, it's important they spend several years as the alternate before they will ultimately step in. Since I'm terming out in two years, it would not be in the best interest of Capitola for me to be the alternate, when we should be grooming another council member to step in at some point.
Anyone else interested in being on it?
I'll do it if Kristen doesn't want it, but if Kristen would like to take that, I'll give you first shot if that Kristen's turn.
When, when do they meet? They meet a Friday morning?
Thursday. First Thursday, usually first Thursday of the month.
But during, during the day, though.
Yeah, I'll be working at that time anyways.
They're here at work. Yeah. I appreciate that. That would be wonderful.
I'll just take the alternate position now.
Okay, thank you. That would be wonderful.
As that, we can deal with that later.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know. Tomorrow morning I'll find out.
Okay. What?
I currently serve as the Metro Representative to the RTC, but that will, that vote is up for tomorrow for new members, so we can hold that until we find out tomorrow, if that would be the appropriate way to do it.
My alternate can certainly serve as the Metro Representative, and because it doesn't last.
I'm not an RTC Representative. I'm a Metro Representative and the, and the representatives, the RTC from Metro.
So he can still remain an alternate to the RTC.
He can only be one, I think.
I think it would be difficult to imagine a scenario in which you, as the alternate, were attending a half of Capitola and also representing Metro at the same meeting.
Nice try.
My recommendation would be to continue this and see whether you're the Metro Representative.
We'll know tomorrow at 8:30 a.m., so.
We can continue this over to the next meeting.
Is there a meeting between now and next month that someone needs to establish the alternate?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
And the alternate is only if Jacque can't attend, or the alternate generally attends meetings just to get up to speed, but it's optional.
All right. All right, sweet pea.
Okay.
We'll continue it at the next meeting.
Okay. Anything else, Linda?
No, now the appointment to the ad hoc.
Yeah, so there is the new commission from the county. It is an ad hoc homelessness governance study commission. They estimate that it will be about a six-month term, monthly meetings, two to four hours each. There was information in the packet with more detail about the position.
Self-homelessness in six months.
I'd be up for that if you want.
Jacque was interested, too.
Oh.
Do you want to draw straws?
No, I'm not, I was just offering myself. I wasn't, I wasn't vying for it.
Oh, okay, thank you. Anyone else interested besides Jacque and Mike? We don't know what day they're meeting yet. They haven't set that up, have they? They haven't set up a day or anything like that. Well, why don't you try it, Jacque, see how it goes, and see if it works into your schedule. If for some reason there's a conflict or something, then we'll, yeah, we'll deal with it, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? Any, any other things, Linda? Okay. The next item was the consent calendar. These are relatively minor items, handled under one motion unless a member of the council would like to pull it for separate discussion, or a member of the audience would like to pull it for separate discussion. So is there any council member that'd like to pull anything?
I'll move the consent, but I have a question on F that could be answered very simply.
Okay. Any council member like to pull anything else?
I'll second. Second, and then I have a question on E of the city manager.
Okay. Anyone from the public like to pull anything for separate discussion? Then, well, just let's take the questions first. Question on E?
Yeah. So I note that there's a statement in here, should we note that the Public Works Department is analyzing the possibility of adding a full-time staff project manager position as a result of recently approved tax measures. And Jamie, I was wondering if you would explain that a little bit further, or maybe Steve? if you would explain that a little bit further, or maybe Steve.
I don't think there's much more to explain at this point. That that's the status, is that we are taking a look at that. And we would have more details for you in the mid-year budget update about that potential position.
We now contract that, don't we, do we not? Kim Horn?
Right now, since for the last several years, we've had a one-person professional public work, one administrative position, which is Steve in the Public Works Department. And so we've been contracting out project management for various projects to help move them forward over the last year. Yes.
So presume, yeah, so presumably this is as the load on Steve gets a little bit larger, we're going to have someone else to help with that. Is that what you're anticipating? Like with the war, for instance?
Again, we will bring a separate staff report with the details in the mid-year. But to answer the question, yes, we anticipate the load continuing as we look forward over the next five to 10 years.
And that would replace the contract project management? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, because this is an extension.
Okay. Anything else on E? On F, questions or discussion?
On F, the Park Mobile?
Yes.
Which I firmly support. It saved my life in Santa Cruz on a daily basis. The question I had is about the $5 for permits. What are they talking about that they charge us for the permits that we give?
No, so the Park Mobile will charge a dollar fifty a permit. So what we're talking about is going online, buying a permit that will be good in the lower parking lot for employees only. So it'd be a monthly permit. We're talking about charging $5 that the city will receive per permit. And then there's a $1.50 per permit fee that Park Mobile charges.
So Park Mobile, you could actually go on there and not just do a space, you could actually buy a monthly permit in the lower lot?
Yes.
Brilliant.
But this is not something you do on your cellphone unless you go to their website. It's a web-based application, not an app-based application.
But everything else will be app-based?
Yes. The paying the fees, the parking meters will continue to be app-based. But this is a separate platform that they have for selling annual and monthly parking.
Thank you.
Any other questions about F?
First of all, I do have a question. But first of all, I'd like to recognize the Parking and Traffic Commission, excuse me, Committee for all the work. I think it's taken over a year. They've talked to a rather extraordinary number of merchants. They've talked to the people that would actually take advantage of this. They put together a survey, put out some very good results in paragraph form that was easy for me to even understand. So I think that this is a great program they've come up with and really appreciate that committee's efforts. The other thing I'd like to ask is, I did get a question about this. If this program is successful for the village, can we consider extending it? It seems to me that could be a good reason. Wait on the results here and then maybe extend it to other areas around the village.
Certainly that's something we can look at. Our goal right now, the emphasis of this program is to get village employees a place to park so they're not parking either in the village or in the residential neighborhoods.
Right.
Absolutely. If we can, you know, offer it to other people, too, if it's successful, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone from the Parking and Traffic Committee want to say anything? We sure appreciate all your work, your hard work on this. Hope you can come up with some solutions for the people on Topaz.
And last, one last question on F. I'm sorry, I was confused a little bit by Jac's question. The Park Mobile app will be useful for all parking meters in the entire city, correct?
So the month, the app, on your phone?
I'm not talking about the permit. I'm talking about paying for a parking space.
That's good. That has, yeah, that's a separate function that we're.
Correct. And that's going to happen, that's all the.
That's already happened. That's already in place.
Good, okay.
That's in place today. It's been in place for about a year. About 20% of our tickets, our tickets, our parking meter fees.
Same thing.
Are received through Park Mobile today.
Right.
Yep. And that's not going to change.
Have we seen any uptick in the income? I know that when I'm laying in bed at about nine o'clock at night and my app tells me I'm still parking in Santa Cruz, I know I'm helping the city out, but still.
So very briefly, the simple answer is yes, actually. We have. Not necessarily associated with the Park Mobile app, but associated with the three-hour time. We've seen an increase in parking meter revenue associated with the three-hour time limit change from two-hour in the village.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So do we have a motion to enter?
Yes, motion and second.
For a licensing agreement? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Was that consent or was that just item F?
That was consent.
That was the whole consent calendar.
The whole thing.
Approve the whole consent calendar. Okay, 10. A is withdrawn, so if anybody is here for that, we're not hearing that. B, consider a report on the library project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we have quite a lengthy presentation, unfortunately, but we're going to try and cover a lot of ground as we go through this. We're going to start out with a review of where we are with the architectural plans. We held a community meeting last couple of weeks ago. It was attended by about 35, 40 residents in the area. They actually received the same, very close version of what you're going to see tonight. The architect presented some conceptual plans and some ideas how to move forward. We're not asking for any action on that tonight. Obviously, if you have any questions of the architect, they're here and it's a great time to get them here. I'd like to thank them for getting here. It's been, the last two times they've come here, 17's been closed. So they're finding different routes to get to 7, to get here, but they did make it tonight. Then we're going to shift away from the design and we're going to talk about budgets and the size of the building and relate that to the budgets and get some, ask for direction as we move forward with that.
We need to have you sit down because we're on another item right now.
I was told the wireless ordinance was the second item on this agenda following the variance. And now I see it's been switched.
No, it's on the agenda for the next item. We're not, we're skipping the first. We're going on to B. And your item is C. Thank you. Thank you.
So with that, I'd like to introduce Chris Knoll and thank him for coming here. Your presentation's on the computer in front of you. And I'll let him go.
Great.
Thank you. And sorry you had trouble getting here tonight. I know Highway 17 was closed. And so we really appreciate the effort you made to come down here.
I feel like I'm jinxed it. Maybe next time it'll be a smooth ride. So thank you very much. Nice to present to you again tonight. I'm Chris Knoll, Principal of Knoll and Tam Architects. And Mark and people, my project manager is here with me tonight. So we wanted to give you sort of an update on this and I'll sort of go through it as quickly and briefly as possible most of the time. You know, just a few of Knoll and Tam's libraries' experience. We did a new library in Los Gatos and another one in Watsonville, I'm sorry, in Marina, in the sort of the Marina Branch Library there, and a third one in San Francisco. And I think what you can sort of tell from these three different libraries, they're all really different. And I think the reason they're different is that every one is sort of designed for its own community. And we sort of pay a lot of attention to kind of what's right in each of these locations where we go. And to do that, we sort of build upon the process to date, which has been very substantial here in Capitola. We've had a lot of community meetings. We are not sort of going very heavy into sort of visioning and community process, but we did take the information out of that. There are quite a few concepts that came out of those community meetings that we're paying close attention to in terms of sort of making sure that we, you know, respond to the input that has been done. And all of these are good elements for us to use as we sort of move forward with our design process. And we've incorporated them into our thinking process. And this is where we are. We're in the sort of the middle of schematic design. And at the end of this phase, we, the building and the site plan will be sort of formed up and sort of give us the basis to proceed to complete the rest of the documentation. And so your input tonight is going to be really important for us to sort of help us make some final decisions about some of the design processes as we finish up the schematic design phase. Your site is going to be the existing library site. There are a number of sort of aspects to it about the parking and the existing building there, the playground that is in the lower, lower right corner. There's some grade changes that make sort of pedestrian access and accessibility will be sort of, we have to pay attention to that. And there are trees, you know, really nice trees that are on the site that we want to preserve as much as possible and at the same time, you know, get as much parking onto the site. So the first thing we did was, you know, after sort of looking at sort of how your site is laid out right now, is to see, you know, what would a 13,000 square foot new building look like if it was all in one big junk. And you can see it's a, you know, it's a pretty big piece. And again, you know, one of the elements that came out of the community process was keeping the scale, you know, appropriate for this town. And so one of our first moves, we sort of break that into two volumes, you know, a larger and a lower volume on the site and sort of fit in the parking around it, always maintaining the playground in the right. Now, this was one of many schemes that we looked at, but this is the one that seemed to be the sort of the favorite among the committee and people that we reviewed it with, this sort of two-bar scheme. And then we've been looking at sort of how do we actually even tweak that a little bit more to kind of respond more to the site. And you can see that the, you know, the large bar has narrowed down a little bit. That's good for daylighting. But the lower bar has sort of modified and sort of, it's sort of changed its footprint a little bit to sort of more embrace those lovely trees in the playground and the park that's there on the site. And so that's kind of the direction that we're going in right now. Our landscape architect, Nicole Steele from Johnny Genneke Associates is here tonight. And they prepared a very nice sketch, a preliminary sketch of what that might be like. And it shows, again, the playground being preserved, but then between the building and the playground is a nice deck off of the children's area and the community room that would kind of go out there and sort of embrace that, maybe having kind of a creek motif running through that would be both visual, but also possibly practical as we sort of manage the stormwater runoff, trying to get as many parking places as we can and trying to find a place for a drive-up book drop, having maybe in the sort of the little niche on the upper right, maybe a quiet adult reading deck because the one of the children's areas in the playground is going to be quite noisy. And people have pointed that out to us and asked if we could find someplace where maybe adults could have a quiet place. And we thought that, you know, south-facing niche could be actually really a lovely spot. And then we'll sort of fill in with landscaping around it and sort of do something nice. But this is very, very preliminary. But Nicole and her staff have done a really wonderful job just taking a quick first pass. These are some of the elements that they would have. Would have some decking that would reach out, some bridges possibly over some of the waterways. Maybe the decks would even come in and come around the trees. And we could do that very carefully to preserve the tree's health. But also some whimsy, you know, some things that would be, make it fun and sort of right in Capitola, some nice paving, some waterways on the right. The floor plans are developing right now. This is, these are the basic components that go into the floor plan. The yellow at the top are the things that come in around the entry, the service desk, the browsing collections, the self-check machines, things like that. The blue areas are the, are the children's areas, children's seating, children's collections, storytime areas. The green on the left are the teen areas. There's a teen area, but also there's kind of a multipurpose room. It could be a makerspace. It could be, you know, a place for teens to do homework, a bunch of different things. The right, the red is, are the large community room. We're trying to, you know, keep as large a community room as we can, but also some group study rooms. Those are very popular, very useful in the library. And then the light, the sort of the aqua color down below are all the adults, it's collections and seating, computers, a quiet study area. So all the things the adults would need. And the bottom line are the staff areas and some utility. This is sort of a quick preliminary idea of how we might lay it out. It's a work in progress, but we have reviewed this with library staff. And I think we've got some solutions here that are really going to be working well. If we zoom in and give you a little bit closer look here, see if I can get a mouse to work here. Yes. So this is the staff area down here. One of the things is we have a convenient book drop here as people walk in. The main entry would be right here. The, this sort of part of the adult area would be maybe kind of the marketplace, a little bit noisier, popular area with popular materials, but also a place where people can, you know, sort of meet and chat and make a little bit more noise with collections in between, the service desk here in the middle that has a really good views in all directions, and then more collections in a quiet area over here. So we sort of go from sort of a noisier to a quieter area here because people like to have both of those things. This is the location of the teen area. And then adjacent to it is that sort of multipurpose room, which could be, again, as I said, a makerspace or a homework space or a meeting room, you know, very, you know, a lot of different things could happen there. But it might have a door that would open between the two to give a lot of flexibility for the teens doing things in the afternoons. The other two sort of small meeting rooms are right here. The large meeting room is down here. The community meeting room is here. So really, it's a library program room during the day and community room at night. So you could close this off with a partition that comes across here and people could enter in from the exterior and have access to restrooms after hours. And then there'll be sort of some storage for that because it might be a number of different ways this meeting room could be set up. It's nice because it's right here at the entrance and you really see it. It faces the, sort of the park and the garden out here. You could sort of spill out of it for an event. And so it seems like a nice location. Excuse me. And then the children's area here in yellow. Again, it's connected to the rest of the library, sort of fairly openly, close to the restrooms, but also sort of separate enough so that the noise that's generated in there can be contained and not disturb too much of the rest of the library. So we have collections and seating and tables and some computers, but also kind of lovely windows looking out onto, onto the park and the playground and the porch out here. So, you know, we've paid attention to, you know, Capitola and what, you know, what you're like for inspiration for us for what would be appropriate here. Because every one of our libraries, you know, is going to be different. So, you know, you've got the beach and the wharf and the, you know, sort of that seaside feel. But you've also got sort of the railroad trestle is one thing that we find particularly inspiring. Maybe we'd have some structural elements that might sort of pick up on that, you know, and other elements of the town. And we try to keep those very much in mind as we develop the character of the building. So we have three different schemes to sort of show you tonight, A, B, and C. And each of them has slightly different character, but they're all based upon more or less that same, that same floor plan. The first one, you know, we call sort of the front porch. It's got two flat roof portions, a high one, you know, which could be about 18 feet high or a little bit more. And a lower one may be about 12 feet high. That would sort of give sort of the large reading room and then the children's area to the left. It would sort of from the street corner of Claire's and Wharf Road, you know, would sort of have a sort of a nice large openness there. The site, as you can see, does slope down. So the building is going to sort of sit up above that corner and we could open up that with a lot of glass. I think it could be a very elegant and open space. The underside of the eve might be natural wood. The exterior materials, you know, could be a variety of different things. And as you move, come in and looking at the entrance side of that, you can sort of see the entry is, you know, is right there in the corner. But also this sort of shows how you might extend that roof to create sort of a lovely porch overlooking the park. Scheme B, we call the butterfly. It has this sort of roof that sort of pitches in two directions down to the center. It is, you know, sort of, it's sort of a lovely sort of shape, very graceful. At the corner, it rises up and sort of gives you kind of a very dramatic feeling there as it really opens up and becomes glass. All of these, we do feel, we should open up on the corner. And then on the other side, the roof pitching up on the children's side would lend itself to kind of creating a nice porch out there. It's a little less good for sort of natural daylighting. The previous scheme was the loud light in from both sides in all spaces. This one somewhat less so. But still, it has some appeal and sort of in the community meeting, people really liked it. And then as you come into the entrance, you get another feeling of how we might add a little bit of whimsy and sort of interest to the building with some kind of fun forms. And then the third scheme, we call sort of maritime, really, because we sort of see it's sort of similar to scheme A with a flat roof. But we bring the bottom of the roof down so it becomes really visible. And that we see would be a kind of a wood, a wood ceiling that would be, you know, both sort of very lovely and warm, kind of like the bottom of a hull of a boat or something like that. It's kind of why we nicknamed it maritime. But, you know, that's all, you know, sort of subjective. And then the lower portion, you know, would not, the tall portion would have overhangs and the lower portion maybe would not have overhangs, just to sort of contrast the two. From the corner, you can kind of see how it again would have this nice overextending eve, but it would be, it would be sloping down toward the center right now with some solid bits, but open in the corner. As you come around the entrance, you can see the sort of the higher portion on the left, but then the lower portion would be sort of a different form. We might use similar materials, different colors, different textures in the high and the low portions so that they would be distinct from each other. As you move around that, you can sort of see the community room on the left and then the children's room beyond and the deck engaging with the garden. And then moving even further around kind of the deck and the children's and then kind of in the corner over here, you know, would be where we might sort of tuck in the adult reading area. But you can sort of see how the children's would be, you know, full of light and reaching out into the landscape beyond. Preliminary ideas about what some of the materials would be on the exterior. Natural wood is something we really like, both on the exterior and the interior. If it was exposed to the weather, it would weather to a natural gray material like that. Even if it was, you know, sort of protected from the weather, we could, you know, have it sort of be a natural wood material. And sort of playing around with openings and framing of the openings and sort of having bands of glass and things like that could be really nice. Masonry would be another one. Whether it's sort of on the upper left, you have a sort of board-form concrete or sort of the. of board-form concrete, or sort of the fiber cement panels in the center, upper part of the center, or actually natural stone would be another possibility on the right-hand side. And then picking up on the theme of the beach of, you know, maybe even finding some stones that have fossils in them or, you know, something like that could be really fun. But masonry, I think, could be a very durable material. And then metal is the third, a third element of this. And we probably wouldn't have a lot of metal on the building because, you know, we want it to stay warm and not be, you know, too metallic, but, you know, a little bit of this goes a long way and it could be really fun. Copper is the ones that are sort of green, and the gray ones are sort of zinc material. All of the materials, from the wood to the masonry to the metal, would be naturally weathering. We don't want to put materials on the building that are going to require a lot of maintenance. We want this building to sort of weather nicely without having to do a lot of sort of upkeep on it, and that it will look good and weather and sort of take on a patina of color over the years that make it look just as good, you know, 20 years down the road as it does now. So that's a very quick part of the presentation. And we did a lot of this presentation to the committee a few weeks ago, and these were some of the ideas that they brought to us about, you know, they want to make sure there was enough parking, and not much we can do about that, but we'll put as much on there as we can. They do want sort of to have a connection across Wharf Road to Rispin and the creek beyond, and they are sort of, they did like the idea about the porch and the use of that outdoor space, but they did want a quiet one. On the interior, they wanted flexible spaces. They, you know, they had some other ideas about that, but mainly it was about acoustics, you know, one big room, how's that going to work? We got that, we'll have that under control. And the exterior, where they were sort of, they were pretty positive about all the designs, but they wanted to make something that was really kind of unique in Capitola, and, you know, finding some references to the local materials and things that are durable. Sustainability was, you know, was something to consider, but not really kind of a paramount driving force. But, you know, we are always incorporating sustainability concepts into everything that we do, and this would be no exception, even if we didn't go for a LEED certification or have to go for something really super high-rated. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions at this time, or shall we just continue?
I'd suggest we just kind of keep continuing, and then we can come back and move that. So if you can switch it back to you. So, the real purpose of tonight's meeting, besides the architectural update, is to review the scope and the budget and determine the library size. So I'm going to walk you through some slides, and then hand it off to the city manager and the finance director to talk about it. As most of you are aware, the 2011 needs assessment was done by the county library system, and that identified a 12,800 square foot library for Capitola. And a lot of the information that's been presented, most of the preliminary work that the architect's done, has been based on that 12,000 or 12,800 or 13,000 square foot size. When we first got under contracts with the architectural firm, we asked their staff to sit down with the library staff, the county library staff, and review the 2011 assessment and come up with a current needs. And by doing that and looking at trends, they've developed a needs assessment of 11,700 square feet. So it's about $1100, $11,000, $1100, $1100 square foot reduction in the size of the library. And that's what, that's without changing the programs or the services that the library provides, mainly based on the current trends that are going in the library. So in your library, in the agenda packet is this wonderful diagram that has the original 2011 assessment on the left and the revised one on the right, and we're lucky enough to have with us tonight Susan Nemitz, the county library director, who's going to come and kind of walk you through some of the changes that we're recommending, especially the major ones.
Good evening and welcome, Susan.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm so excited about this project, so it's such a delight to be in front of you. One of the things we really wanted to do was validate this document. It was created in 2011, and like many organizations, our business is changing rapidly, so we wanted to just validate the numbers in here, make sure that we felt that they were still correct and that none of the changes that we've been seeing would greatly affect the program. You see that several of these changes really are small changes, rounding changes. I think there's a couple areas we looked at in depth, and I have to say, we included the Scotts Valley branch manager and the Live Oak branch manager because they're our two newest libraries, so they've been working in brand-new libraries and have a lot of opinions about what works and what doesn't. We also have an expert on staff that really helps us manage and plan our collection size, and we wanted to do some modeling around shelving height, because if you look in modern libraries, shelving heights are coming down. And we're having some significant changes in our collections, so we really wanted to validate the collection size and then how much floor space that collection size would take up. So one of the things you're not seeing as a change item is we did, in some ways, reduce some of the collection, particularly media. I think you do see the DVD reduction, but we also lowered the stacks, so then the net change is zero. Other areas that we made more significant changes is the media browsing area. What we're seeing is the decline in DVDs as movie going, goes online to online streaming. We're changing our model of computing. We have planned a series of desktop computers, but what we're finding with our patrons is they want a mix of desktops and laptops that they can sit in more comfortable seating with. And so we took down the size of the desktops and are going to move to a more fluid computing model, but there will still be some desktops there. The history piece, you know, I know history is really important to this community. We had a long discussion about it, and we had a long discussion about it with the community members. We're really going to try to incorporate history throughout the building as part of the art and architecture of the building. And we already have a history collection assumed in the collection itself, so we felt like we didn't need an additional space. The one piece, oh, and then we looked at the back room, and there's been several automation technology improvements, and we kind of did an assessment about what kind of technology we wanted to put back there, and we don't think we're going to go to automatic sorting, so we could take out a small portion of the workroom. The one orange change really is a result of pushback on that library work. We went then to Trina from Nolan Tam and the community group, and they pushed back, and I think rightfully so, about the group study and tutoring rooms. When I was a library director 10 years ago, the source of tension in the library was really around public computing because we rationed it, and there was too many people wanting to use it and too few people, and too few computers. Right now, interestingly enough, a big tension point is around quiet study rooms or group study rooms. We're seeing incredible pressures from students who are doing group study projects and need a place to meet and work on a project together, so they like to have a room so that they can talk and be a little noisier, keep the rest of the library quiet. But also, we're seeing a lot of adults and the workforce switching to contract work, and a lot like to come and work in the library and would love a quiet space. And so the real pressure we see in the library is around small group study and individual study. So you can see we actually added more of that back. I think these changes are reasonable. I still think this library is a great size considering the size of the community, the size of the site, and the size of the parking. And I'm really pleased with this outcome, confident that'll be an exciting place. Any questions?
I just have a quick question. You could, you could probably do a whole lot of history in that meeting room. You could probably just use all those walls dedicated for Capitola history and, you know, and rotate it and so forth, but that's a great space.
That's a great space to do it. Thank you. And we have some plans and ideas. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, continue now.
Thank you.
So as we start looking at the budget for the library, as you can see clearly on the funding, we have two dedicated sources to it. We have the Measure S funds of $8 million and successor agency funds of $2.6 million, giving us our starting budget at $10.6 million. Based on the two S costs, building sizes you've seen so far, the 12,800-foot library would cost about $14 million, and the 11,700 square foot building would cost a little over $13 million. So obviously, we have a budget deficit of $3.5 and $2.5 million respectively for those two buildings based on where we are today. So staff's been working on trying to identify alternatives for you guys to consider tonight, both in funding and in sizes. We have some pretty confidence and high confidence of some potential outside funding sources. The Friends of the Library, we've put them in for $350,000, and we'll be working with them to try and meet that goal. And there's also some funding, about $200,000 from the Library JPA and the Old Library Fund that we hope to be able to apply to this project. So that would increase our existing funding from the $10.6 million to $11.15 million. So, based on those numbers, we're presenting here three options for you to decide on tonight. We utilize, the first option is to utilize the revised needs assessment and build an 11,700 square foot library to cost $13 million. Option two would be to remain at the 12,800 size and a budget of $14, $150,000, $14 million. Or three would be to recognize our likely budget of $11 million, and with that, we estimate we could build a 9,120 square foot library. Obviously, between option three and option two there, between 9,000 and 12,000, 13,000 square feet, we can go anywhere. There's lots of room in there depending on what our budget is. I'd just like to add, and I'm going to emphasize this as we get to the end of it, right now, the architect's waiting for a decision before we develop those plans. You saw the very preliminary plans, we saw it now, on what the square footage of this building's going to be. It's going to affect our design starting today, and so for us to proceed, we need a decision on how big a library we're building. So on that, I think I'm going to pass it off to Jamie, who's going to talk to you about financing.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so this is where things are going to get tough. Unfortunately, as Steve alluded to, the budget that we have at this point gets us a library that's smaller than we've had expectations for, which would be a 9,000, 9,000 square foot facility. So what we have done is we've tried to develop conceptual financing models for how we could fund each one of the different library sizes that we're talking about. I want to stress that these are conceptual in nature only. At the end of the day, our recommendation is that we're not going to be issuing debt today, we're not going to be making the final financing decision today. We have time to make that decision, and we have time to work with our finance advisory committee to come up with a final recommendation, but I wanted to show the council a model of how we might be able to get there using the information we have today. And really, what we've done is we've taken a look at the funding sources that Steve outlined, which includes the Friends of the Capitola Library, includes some allocation from regional sources, and then looking at our general fund. And for option one, which is based on the new needs assessment number, the 11,700 square feet, we essentially would need about $2 million of general fund dollars. And there's two relatively obvious sources of general fund dollars that we've identified, and one is using the funds available in the pension obligation bond fund. As we close that fund out next year, we anticipate that there will be some fund balance there, which is a good one-time source to use on a project. That's about $450,000. In addition, at the oversight board in our last city council meeting, your council approved the payoff, or the final payoff of the old RDA loan between the city and the redevelopment agency, and that's $400,000. So that could get us $850,000 in one-time funding. The remaining $1.15 million would have to come from other general fund sources, and that's under option one. Option two, we would use all the same sources, plus we'd need $2.1 million of other general fund sources. So we'll skip to the next slide, and we can pivot back to the slide as we move forward, but when we look at how we would come up with this, these sort of other general fund sources, we would have to do things like, over a two-year cycle, defer $750,000 of capital improvement program projects. I don't know what the capital improvement project budget will be over the next two years, but loosely speaking, each year's budget has been in the ballpark of $700, $800,000. So basically, we would be cutting our CIP in half from what it's been historically. In addition, looking at our internal service fund balances, we could, as has happened in the past, effectively use all the available balance in the supplies, in the technology funds, effectively taking those internal service fund balances down to zero. And then, really, basically, what we would have, we could pull about $200,000 out of the facilities reserve, which would effectively bring that close to zero as well. So that's sort of maxing out the readily available general fund sources, and that was what we would have to do in both option one and two. And in option two, when we go to the full 12-8, we would really start to need to look at debt financing, and we would have to look for whatever term, whatever kind of loan would make the most sense. Now, these are just conceptual models, and I, the one thing I can tell you is that if we choose option one, two, presumably not with three, but one, two, or some option in between or beyond them, they, these models will change over time as the city's financial picture becomes more clear over the next 12 months, as our finance advisory committee can take a look at it, as we get more details about potential debt issues, what types of interest rates we could get. Now, there's another piece of information that I really want to touch on as well, and this is really, frankly, bad news, and it came in last week, is that the Calpers Board, which is the entity that provides our retiree pension plans for the city, changed their discount rate, which sounds pretty esoteric, but the implication behind it is that it resulted in a very significant increase in the city's payments to Calpers in our upcoming years. These additional payments were not included in our last five-year plan that we had in our last budget. So effectively, what happened is when we looked three or four years out, we just took about a $750,000 hit between last week and this week. So, the next slide, when I look ahead, I see the Calpers costs, which we know are coming, and they are going to require significant belt tightening over coming years. In addition, it has been seven years since the last time we had sales tax decreases, and economic cycles come and go, and during the last economic downturn, we lost $1.8 million per year in sales tax revenue. We're just climbing back to that point now. So, I don't know when the next economic downturn is going to come, but those internal fund balances that we've always had were really important last time we had an economic downturn. And in fact, they enabled, they and the cutbacks that we made, let us get all the way from the economic downturn until that pike broke in 2011, and we did not tap into our reserves until that point. We were able to get through.
And we didn't have furloughs. Everybody worked full-time. Where the other cities around, most of them had furloughs.
We did have a furlough for 18 months, yeah, for about 18 months.
Not as long as everybody else.
Right. In addition, we know we have a new mall owner, and frankly, I think that's good news, that they are looking at a redevelopment project, and I hope that they will come forward with something in the near term. At some point though, probably in the next three to five years, if they do develop a project, there will be impacts out there, and that'll probably result in at least on the short term, or some sort of period of time, impacts our sales tax revenue, because if the mall is being redeveloped, obviously, it's not open. So frankly, all of these things to me are concerning. The Calpers increase is probably being the most so. I can look ahead, and I can see that we are going to have budgets that have very little slack, if any, when we get four years out unless we see some real changes in revenue, changes in our service delivery, or we see new revenue sources coming in. So I wanted to be very clear and make everyone aware of that as we make this decision about the library. Pivot to the next slide. So the recommendation tonight is to come up with a square footage. I mean, that's really the key. And at the end of the day, that's what our library, our library architects are going to design to, and then we're going to have a budget attached to it. And we will come back, and we'll come back with a financing plan to do it. But in that range of somewhere between 9,100 and...
12-8.
12-8, you know, is where we need to find ourselves, and we need to understand that when we get above that 9,100, we start talking about general fund contributions into the project. So with that, the second piece of the recommendation, because I do think... So with that, the second piece of the recommendation, because I do think it is important, is that what we would want our finance director to do is take these conceptual funding models for whatever size we end up with tonight, and work with the finance advisory committee and develop a cohesive financing plan so that as this library project is moving forward, a financing plan can be attached to it and come to the council in the same time for consideration. So with that, all of our staff are available for questions, as well as our architects as well, and landscape architects, so thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm sure we have a lot of questions. I'm anxious to hear from the public. Are there burning questions that council members have before we hear from the public? Okay, let's hear from the public on this item, then we'll bring it back, and we'll have plenty of time to talk about this tonight, because there's a lot to talk about, there's a lot to consider, and so we're going to take our time and really do this deliberatively so that we can make the best decision we can. Yes.
Yes. Again, I was told the wireless ordinance was going to follow on the agenda, the variance when I called-
You want to speak on this item?
...about the wireless.
No, you want to speak on this item.
So the order's been reversed from one-
The item, the agenda's been published since last Friday. I don't know what you were told, but if you want to address this, the library, you're welcome to do it.
Anyway, do you want to address the libraries? There's an elephant in the room here. It's called microwave radiation from Wi-Fi and all the wireless.
Now, I'm not going to let you speak on it, the next item. You got one chance to talk about it.
Excuse me?
This is the library issue of wireless.
That's what I'm talking about.
This is not before us.
If you would let me finish my sentence.
The wireless is the next topic. You're welcome to speak on that then.
The library. I am a retired school teacher. I taught 30 years. I would take my children to the library gladly. I would check out 30 books at a time for the classroom. I don't go anymore. Libraries should be safe places for everyone and to accommodate everyone. Wi-Fi is known to be emitting microwave radiation. And you go into the library now, and you can take this detector, I get an immediate headache. I'm going to submit a document, I just gave one to the library director just now, and I believe when she was introduced here, was it about a year ago, I discussed this issue with her. Libraries should be safe places, they should not be microwave radiation emitting places. I just heard discussion about laptops. One fact I read from a reproduction and fertility organization is that four hours on a laptop causes DNA strand break in sperm. It's radiation emitting. There was the recent study of the National Toxicology Program last May stating that cellphone radiation, which is similar frequencies, cause cancer in laboratory rats exposed to radiation typical to what people are exposed to, one in 12 rats, brain tumors, heart tumors, precancer lesions. Barry Trower submitted a document, as did other health professionals, to remove Wi-Fi from Portland schools when a father's school sued the school district to remove the Wi-Fi, which is in this room, which is in the libraries, which is everywhere, because the harm to this father's daughter and other children. And I'll just read you one sentence here at the end. And he has documentation, you have received this before, this is not new to you. The paradox, of course, is how microwave radiation can be used as a weapon to cause impairment, illness, and death, and at the same time, be used as a communications instrument. Therefore, Wi-Fi cannot be safe for the schoolchildren and teachers, and I would add, library patrons exposed to it. Also, there exists an ongoing stealth microwave warfare industry continuing from the 1950s.
We've exceeded the 300s.
A way to save money is to remove Wi-Fi and the technology from the library. And the other recommendation is you, I recommend you keep to your original budget. This is way over budgeted.
Thank you very much.
And strain other things.
Thank you very much. Next, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Harlan, council, treasurer Wilk, staff. My name is Gail Ortiz, and I'm here representing the Capitola Library Advisory Committee. We met this afternoon, and we unanimously agreed that the 11,700 square foot size for the library is recommended. We took a look at the same numbers that you took a look at, and one of the things that we were impressed with was that this is over a two-year budget cycle. So this is two years out of the history of Capitola, where we might be squeezed a bit. And that is compared to the 30 to 50 years life expectancy and usefulness of a public building, the likes of which we've never come close to building in Capitola for many, many, many years. So given the importance of this community meeting place, we thought it was important to stretch ourselves a little bit over the next couple of years. And it sounded like Jamie was talking about the fact that none of us really feel that the mall development is going to happen within the next two years. So we have a window here prior to that happening. There's just, I can't see any way that is going to start construction over the next two years. And the PERS, I think we have a little bit of time, there's a little impact in this next couple of years, but we have some time to start looking at that, too. So we feel it's financially prudent to consider the 11,700 square foot branch. When we entered into this contract back in 2000 with the county to save 2.7 million dollars, we knew at that time that that wasn't going to be enough for a library. So we always knew we were going to want a larger library, and this was a good start. Then we came to Measure D. We had a lot of members of the public outside of Capitola vote for Measure D, who use the Capitola library. So we've received countywide money, a lot of countywide money, and it feels appropriate to us and to me that Capitola put in a little bit more money at this time and show its faith in the system, in the library system, and it just doesn't seem like that much money over the next couple of years for this long-term use. So now, speaking about library size, we really encourage looking at what the professionals told us and not trying to second-guess these adjustments that have been made to the library size. We feel they're reasonable, and they're workable, and we'll be really happy with the result. So I'm available for any questions, if you have any questions about the Library Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you very much for looking at this and your advice.
Appreciate it.
Would other people like to come up and speak? They'd like to get your input about what size of a library you would like, and how much money you'd like us to spend, and what you'd like us to not do if we spend extra money and we don't pave a street? You'd rather have us put it into the library, or what would you all like us to do?
Oh, you got Ron up. You must have said something about that.
Good evening.
Good evening, council and madam mayor. Having attended the show and tell a while back on a Saturday, one of the things that was neglected by the architectural firm that you hired tonight was the idea of maintenance. And I expressed a concern, it didn't get on the charts, and I think everybody boo-hooed it, and that's basically the flat-top roofs. With the amount of rain we've had, and how many times we've redone the community room in this building with its flat-top roof, I'm sure you're all aware of the maintenance fees connected with that. With that said, I'm 100% in favor of the idea of the biggest library we can get, but I want to remind the council that the original contract with the library board was for a 7,000 square foot building. And in those days, we were even offered that kind of space in the mall that you're talking about, and the library board turned it down. That would have ended that contract if we didn't all really desire a library in Capitola. The concern that Jamie raised with regards to sales tax revenue, I don't hold the optimism, and I don't have the crystal ball that he has with regards to sales tax revenue, under the new mall owners. I do know that other facilities that they own are not heavy in sales tax revenue, and most of them would, I think the city would have to consider an amusement tax almost when you go to a theater, when you go to different venues like that. And that would concern me that you get yourself too much in debt. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak?
I spoke about getting rid of microwave radiation.
No, we heard it. Thank you. Any other comments about the library? Please come up, please come up to the microphone if you'd like to speak about the size of the library tonight. We'd love to hear your comments about that.
I'm wondering what the size of the current library is.
Not quite 4,000 square feet.
I see. Okay. I'm definitely not in favor of going further into debt than the amount that's available to us. My name is Martha Bowersock, and I live here in Capitola in the Trade Winds Mobile Home
Thank you very much for coming down. Anyone else like to speak? Shocked. Okay, we'll bring it back to the council then. Mike, you want to start?
Sure. It's my favorite topic. I've been beating on this horse for a long time, so forgive me if I go on a little bit. Let me take you back, and Ron, Karen, and Stephanie will remember, when we had a 1,500 square foot library across the street, and it was overflowing immediately. We went to a 3,500 square foot library where it is now, and it was immediately wall-to-wall people. And there's a reason the need assessment went to 12,800. And because it will immediately be filled. And if you reduce it dramatically, true, it'll still be a beautiful library, and people have said, okay, I don't care the size of the library, I just want a really nice library. That works for the people conceptually, but library professionals know, things like programs, collections, homework centers, children's centers, community meeting rooms, they're vital to the community, for everyone. I would dare say that even if you're not a regular member of the library, if you don't go to it on a regular basis now, this library will draw even more people than normally go in and out of the library on a daily basis. We replenished and doubled our reserves in less than four years when we were on the mat after the flood. We did amazing things. True, the economy was going on a slight upturn, but it wasn't, it didn't rebound immediately. And we tightened the belt, and we made it work. And that was to the tune of $3 or $4 million. We did amazing things. This is a very small amount of pain for an enormous amount of gain. This is two years of belt tightening, two years, $500,000 a year, which we have spent $500,000 on a mid-year budget cycle repeatedly. It happens. While I'm, I seem to be pitching for the 12,008, if it were my money and I were rolling the dice for my money, they'd be out there. I realize we have a responsibility, and maybe that's stretching it a little bit too far. But if we do anything less than the library professionals recommend, which is 11,008, then we've done the community a disservice. It is not going to leave our roads unpaved. We'll still have CIP money. In addition to that, the latest Measure D by Transportation will give us $400,000 a year, right off the bat, for CIP projects. And to Gail's point, we are responsible for putting a little more skin in the game. We got $8 million from the whole county. That's great. We got 2.6 from RDA, which we didn't really feel came from the RDA. For us to throw in a little more over the next two years, and by the way, two years is much closer horizon line than the city manager's PERS projection. If you bring the PERS item back for us, you can see that the first big jump, 2021, our library will be two years old, okay? And there'll be no more money to spend on it for construction. That part will be over. Two years of effort does not compare to a 50- or 100-year-old building, to a building that will be in our community well beyond our lifetimes. We cannot act out of fear. We cannot let the CalPERS, with all respect to the city manager, it is a clear and present danger, we have confronted CalPERS situations before, and we have surmounted them, and we know this. We cannot act out of the fear of unknown. The county has estimated next year's sales tax figures will be 2.5% higher than this year, and they have a lot of people working on that. This will be very, very short-term. The citizens of Capitola cannot be given a library that is obsolete in the planning stage. It's the wrong thing to do. And while I would dance out of here with great joy at 12,800 feet, I understand reticence because of the budget, but we cannot in any way, shape, or form go below 11,700, because it will not give our library professionals the tools they need to provide the citizens of Capitola a first-class library.
Thank you very much. Who would like to speak next? John?
I just have some questions about the design.
You want to bring the architect up?
Yes, please, and maybe Susan, if you could chime in on this. What I'm trying to understand is the amount of space given to staff use. And so I just want to understand that because-
Put up that slide again for, as the map.
Right. This is the one I was thinking about.
Yellow or green and the orange, that one or the other one?
You had a schematic of the whole layout.
The one before that.
Yeah, there, right, okay. So I'd like an understanding of how this is actually used, and, you know, from my standpoint, I'm thinking it's taking away from public space, and I'm looking at meeting rooms that could possibly be used in the library itself, maybe before the library's open, and the lounge, I mean, we need a lounge, but I'm just trying to get an idea, if we were going to shrink that a little bit and take advantage of the fact that you could probably use some of the library's space before hours for some of the things that you could obviously not do. I mean, I can't see you having a meeting when the office, when the library's open anyway. So I'm trying to flex that a little bit.
City council member, it's a really good question. I do want to point out that the gray spaces include a lot of things like restrooms, which are required by code, the electrical room, the telephone room. The lounge is a staff lounge. I think the space that's currently being shown as sort of a table with chairs around it really is a space that we assign to carts and book processing. So while right now it looks like a meeting space, that is not the way in which it would function. I would be happy to take you into a back room of any of our libraries to show you what's going on. As items come in, you have to check them in, you load them in carts in order for them to go out on the floor and be shelved, and it just does take some room to have that many carts being loaded and checked in. And so it's more of a work processing space than drawn as a table.
Okay, thank you. That's basically what I'm trying to get at, because it didn't drive me the right direction at first.
And having designed many, many libraries, I mean, we've done over 40, this is a very modest amount of space proportionally for staff. I mean, we, normally, we'd probably have twice as much space. And the staff has been, I guess, very sort of-
Willing.
Willing, to sort of take less. But, you know, I think it's really important that the staff have a decent place, you know, to work, and that will be completely filled up with people and materials, I think, during working hours.
I just want to, I would like to add that we use a lot of volunteers, and so when you see four desk sites, it's actually not all staff that are going to be seated there, it's going to be volunteers, maybe mending materials. You may have someone coming in to do a program, you may have the friends setting up for an activity. So it's, they become multi-use, almost hoteling spaces, everything but the office space, which is really for the branch manager, and it does require a door because she does do personnel and financial transactions with the public.
And I just have one more question for you, Susan. I just wanted to better understand, I'm really very grateful that you looked over and I guess refined- I'm really very grateful that you looked over and I guess refined the initial recommendation to reflect the needs that we have right now, taking into account the competition for space and how much that may take or may not take. But you also conferred with some of the other librarians in newer branches and was this a pretty unanimous, where there's any discussion or contention or pretty much came to the same conclusion?
I think it was not contentious at all. I think they came to a very mutual agreement pretty quickly.
Okay. Maybe contentious is the wrong word, but I mean, the idea that they maybe had differing, widely differing views. The 11,700 seems to be the consensus.
Reasonable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent.
You know, one thing that might help you is, so the current library's under 4,000 square feet. The Aptos Library is about 8,000 square feet. Live Oak is just over 13,000. The New Scotts Valley Library is just over 13,000. Sometimes for me, it helps to understand how other buildings are sized, if you've been in any of those buildings, that might help you think about the size.
Thank you. Excuse me, but we're making, having a presentation right now, so we're not taking questions from the floor. Go ahead, John.
Yeah. And then a question for the architect. So I'm just trying to think about, in terms of the options that you had, like the Marine and stuff like that, how would that be affected one way or the other if you did the smaller, the larger? Like if you went 11,700, you could still fit that concept in there, you're not having to change some of the things we've done.
Oh, yeah. I mean, larger, smaller, it would just sort of scale up and down.
It would just be scalable.
Yeah, it leaves a little more room around it on the site, you know, which is good.
So one's not going to, because you base it on the 12,700, so you're not going to be constrained if we go a little bit smaller.
No, we've, we knew sort of this was the writing on the wall, so we've been sort of looking at how we would have a flexible sort of arrangement. So things would shrink and move a little bit in order to reconfigure. But there wouldn't have to be any major changes to that planned layout in order to take 1,000 square feet out of it.
Okay. And I also have to thank you for alerting us to this because you know from your experience that the costs are going to be going up. So thank you very much that we can make this decision right now.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Are there other questions or comments or suggestions?
I might also add that part of our library budget is a $1 million contingency. And I can tell you from construction that it will be dipped into without a shadow of a doubt. But I think that it's a, it's a good number, it's a stable number, and it's rational. They've also built in escalation because of the construction atmosphere right now in Silicon Valley. It's expensive to build. It's more expensive than it was eight years ago. And the architects and our project managers have taken that into consideration. So these are all very real, rational, not pie-in-the-sky numbers.
That's what I wanted to ask about. Are we looking at any surprises or big cost overruns? We've been pretty good, Steve, on our projects. You know, we've had some in our initial bids that were surprises, but once we got into a project, are we, are we going to expect any, any big surprises that might be expensive?
We always expect surprises and we do everything we can to prevent that from affecting the overall budget, which is why we have sort of a hefty project contingency. And we've, we're taking a really close look with our cost estimators at, you know, the market conditions right now. And so we feel like we've got a pretty good handle on it. It's a little bit of a wild race out there, but it could be by the time we come to bidding the job, the market will have cooled down a little bit. You know, we're going to track it at every phase as we go through. We're doing multiple cost estimates and each of them will contain sort of a factor in those, those conditions.
I'm sorry I missed the workshop because I was ill, but, you know, one of the things that, that people have said that they liked so much about our library was the playground. And we had talked about maybe at some point expanding the play area as a draw, Susan mentioned before, as a, as a draw for more young families to come to the library and bring their kids. We haven't done that though, have we?
We haven't expanded...
The deck is going to be an interface. There's a pretty big deck area.
But not other play area for the kids, not more, play equipment?
We're not planning on any more play equipment at this point. But we are, but there is sort of, you know, we are integrating what's there with a little bit more sort of space around it as it goes toward the building and the parking lot.
But would it be, but would it be area where kids could play in there?
Yes, yes.
The children's section.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the entire area between the library and the corner of the site and over to the parking will be a playable area. So, you know, for instance, we're sort of looking at, you know, having something that sort of gives us a little bit of shield, you know, from the parking to the, you know, to the playground area and that would be something kids could play on.
Susan, what do you see envisioned in that area?
The thing that I like about where we're going is this, it's almost hugging the play area. And one of the things we observe is a lot of parents standing around and watching their children play. So I can imagine kind of a reading deck where people have places to sit, a child could be playing, a mom could be reading, neighbors could be meeting. The other thing we're looking at is creating fluid spaces between the meeting room and the kids' room. So if you had a really large summer reading program, which is something that happens relatively often in the summer, you could open up the meeting room and sort of flow into the children's room. I would also like to see that sort of fluidity between the children's room and the garden itself, so that again, they become overflow spaces at our busiest times. I think it creates a flexibility that would really be utilized by the library and its customers.
We don't want to create a parking problem. So what's the square footage and our parking needs and where do we stand with that? Because we do not want to cause a parking problem. And part of that would be not having perhaps large activities there where you're inviting hundreds of people to come because there's not room to park. So where, how many places do we have?
So for option one, which is 11,700, we have a preliminary parking need of about 38 to 60 spaces. And it's such a wide range because there's different standards that are used. We've actually engaged a traffic engineer to come through and do an analysis for us on the parking demand, so we have a single number. Up at the option two, the 12,800, those numbers obviously grow and more in the 45 to 65 range. I believe the plan you have up here right now has 40 parking spaces in it. So we're meeting our, the lower end of the demand right now. In addition, we're looking on Claire Street there, you can see where the sidewalk goes away from the curb and there's a green landscaped area of trying to put parking, we've done an analysis, so we can add four on-street parking spaces there. That we envision would be 24 minutes so people could go in and drop a book off or pick a book up and not have to go into the parking lot. So I think we're really close now of meeting the parking demands with what we have.
How many spaces would we gain if we drop it back to 1,000 square feet to 11,700?
How many, on the site itself?
On the site.
I don't have that number. I don't think we've, we haven't done any design work on that yet, but certainly...
We could perhaps get a row of four or five more parking spaces out there with 1,000-square-foot less library?
Wouldn't want to be over optimistic about that. We haven't really designed it yet, maybe a couple.
Yeah.
Possibly four. It sort of depends, it still remains to be...
We go back to the, one that has the meeting room on it, the, shows the outlines. I mean, I love having a meeting room there. And I did talk to former supervisor Butz today about the library that was planned in Live Oak quite a few years ago and asked her if she had any advice for us also about the library and how it's working and how it was planned and did you do anything wrong or any, have any advice about it? And she said they didn't put a meeting room in there because they had the meeting room at Simpkins Swim Center and they wanted to use that room for other things in the library. So I love having a meeting room here, but I don't want to have a meeting and invite 100 people and we only have 40 parking places. So maybe the meeting room should be smaller, even though that goes against my grain of, you know, having a public meeting and inviting the people to the public, but it's got to be workable. So...
I can talk to that.
You might talk to that.
I think this is a really good and important question because I think libraries are making really different decisions. I no longer call this a meeting room, I call it a community program room. And I think libraries are moving away from static meetings and more to learning opportunities. I'm not sure that answers the challenge that you pose, but what we're finding is we aren't building, for example, a computer classroom, because what you see in libraries that have them is you walk by and 10 hours of the 12 hours they're open, it's closed. And you see this resource sitting there with no one able to use it. So libraries are getting computer carts, setting up a computer classroom at 2:00 and then maybe there's a book club at 3:00 and then maybe there's a community meeting at 4:00 and then maybe there's an author talk at 6:00. And so really trying to create a space that has so much flexibility, you can really do multiple different things within it. I think you'll be surprised that our fastest sort of line of activity right now is public programming. And if you look at the growth, I think our programming numbers grew 70% last year at a time when we're very light in staff. There's really high interest in people participating in intellectual enriching activities in their community. And I think we've only begun to scratch the surface of that.
Thank you very much. Other comments or questions about, about this?
Yeah, you know, I just want to say I appreciate the, the reference of the size to other libraries because I would have thought that the one in Scotts Valley was substantially larger than the one in Live Oak. And so I think that says a lot about design and, and layout. And, you know, with that in mind, I agree that we, we shouldn't go any smaller than what's been recommended by our library advisory board and by our library director. I think those are important things to, to keep in mind.
Ed, you want to weigh in?
Sure. Somebody earlier mentioned there was a gorilla in the room and I'm going to bring the gorilla back. The gorilla is fiscal responsibility. And Susan, I see you over there cringing right now, so, you know, just hang in there, okay? I love...
Sit if you want to, if you want to.
Yeah, I'm going to go for, I'm going to go for a while, so go ahead and sit down, yeah.
Anybody questions, Will?
I love the idea that we're going to build a new library in Capitola. I love the idea, when Mike just gave me another, I thought it was always small, but I'll take it back to 1,500, that's good. We're 3,800 now, or 37, we're going to triple it and people still think that's not enough. You know, I'm, I'm concerned about the pension obligation, I'm not going to blow it off. I mean, we took out a $5 million, you took out a $5 million bond, you're making the last payment. PERS has been in denial for the past three years. This is not over, okay? This obligation is ours. I could put the city manager on the spot right now and tell him to give us the exact millions of dollar number that we are indebted to that system, but I'm not going to do that because we all know that it's millions. And so for us to think that it's going to go away or we can get through it, I mean, I like your idea about wanting to put skin in the game, I don't have a problem with that. I just don't want to go all body in on this, okay? A little skin is fine. We have some obligations, you know, to look at the charts, to look at how we're going to come up with this money. I essentially say that we've depleted every one of the accounts that we've taken time to build up to do many other things for the many 10,000 people in this town. It's not just all about the library. I'm, I'm very considerate of the fact, and I'll put the public works director on the spot right now. I can tell, I can look him, I'm not going to make him give me an answer, but if I say something wrong, I want you to raise your hand. If the McGregor Park came in under budget or at budget, raise your hand. If any of the last paving projects we did on McGregor, Monterey, Park, if any of those came in at budget or under budget, raise your hand. Okay, I tell you, I know we just depleted everything on Claire's to finish those projects, okay? And I can call the markup here from finance to verify that, so don't raise your hand so quickly on that. Because I don't think we want to go down this path.
All right.
I love the work we did on Park, I love the work we did on Monterey. I think all the citizens appreciate the improvements we're trying to do. And there is a $400,000 infusion of money coming from Measure D, another tax that we put on you. We put Measure S on you to build this library. We put Measure D on you to do the roads. We put Measure F on you to build the wharf. We're going to have the same discussion when we go to build that wharf. We want to build the wharf, we want it the best we can. We think we're going to have about $7 or $8 million. We hope that's enough. What if the wharf comes back in at $12 million? Do we, we're not going to do the $12 million job. We had some discussions here a few years ago about building the city hall, about building projects. This town came unglued about going into debt. Projects run over. It's not against you, the architect. It's not your fault, okay? It's components, it's labor, it's all those products, okay? But what we did, what we need at the end of the day is a library that works. I struggle with the fact that we were at 3,800 today. It's over there and by some degree it works, okay? We raised $2.6 million in RDA money and we were told to build a 7,000-square-foot library. We couldn't do it. So now we get another $8 million, we have a total of 10.6, and we're looking at 14. No, people, stop it, okay? Spend what you have. All these other places we're robbing money from are other essential things we need in this town. For me, it's like, I know these, I know this architect is a great architect and I know that the head of the library is a fantastic innovative woman. And I know if I tell them, go build me a 10,500-square-foot library, you'll figure it out. And you know what? It'll be fine. Because we still have in here, I mean, I applaud Gail and your people for taking the challenge to say we're going to commit to raising $350,000. And the JPA has the money and Mike says it's a contingency fund and he, thank God, he brought it up. We will definitely go into that contingency fund. And for me, I'm willing to commit that the city will put in $1 million. But when I say I'm going to commit $1 million, I do the math, I add it all up, I pencil it all out, it's 10,500 square feet. And I would not vote for anything that's more than 10,500 square feet.
Ready for a motion?
No.
Okay.
Sorry. But I want to, let's look at the financing again, because I'd be willing to go, I agree with Ed, I'm nervous about the finances. I'm nervous about PERS, I'm nervous about the federal government, I'm nervous about the state government, nervous about the mall and...
You're nervous about 2007 coming back.
Sales tax. And what I want is to look in my crystal ball and see where the city's going to be financially in a year and two years and three years. And we just do not know. I mean, and, yeah, we know what the county's projecting, projecting the sales tax to go up two and a half, for us it's usually more. They're usually conservative and usually it's a little bit more. But this makes me nervous. The times make me nervous. And, you know, if we were well on our way with the mall and that was going to be successful and so forth, but if they tear down stuff and then some of those stores are out of business for a while and we, and our sales tax goes down again, you know, I can't imagine that happening, but what do malls do when they, when they remodel? They, you know, I think they close part of it down and they remodel it. And that's, that's kind of what, and I know that's not for two years. So I'd like to look at, you know, I'd like to put a little more, little more money into it, but I'm not, I don't think a whole lot. I would, I, I'm nervous about asking the friends to raise $350,000. That is, that's a lot of money, that's wonderful, but that's a lot of money. And to take, you know, the successor agency loan repayment, you know, that looks okay. The pension obligation bond money, that's one-time money and that looks okay. But I'm a little nervous about taking any CIP unless we really look at that and I see exactly what projects are going to be delayed, because we've delayed things here for 10 years, 15, 12 years. And so I'd like to see, I'd like to take a closer look at that.
Madam Mayor, it's, it's very critical that this decision be made now and to move the architects along. So to that end, I would move that we take option one for the 11,700-square-foot library. And that is my motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion, what I think is critical right now that Capitola is, thinks about spending $10 million. You talk about the largest investment we've done in many years. And I don't think it's a rush item, I don't think that it's something we need to do, I don't think we need to move these people forward. I think we need to seriously consider the fact that our city manager just dropped on us a bomb about PERS that was unveiled a week ago. And we all sat here and act like that doesn't exist, like we don't have that obligation, like we don't have to pay those bills, like that's not going to continue to drive our workforce out of this town. As that pension obligation goes up and our people are asked to take pay cuts more and more, our, our force is going to leave, it's going to, it's going to affect our employees. And we're sitting here saying we want one thing and one thing only and that's this, this monolithic library. I cannot sit here and say that, and I, and I would almost bring Mr. Knoll back up and ask him, I said, if I make you build me a 10,500-square-foot library, are you going to stand there at that microphone and tell me it's an abomination? Are you going to tell me that it's not going to work? You're going to tell me that you can do whatever we tell you to do? That's what you're going to tell me. Susan, you may not be an advocate, you may say, you know, Ed, you're cutting out 1,000 feet, but what I'm doing is I'm cutting out 10% and I think every household in America cutting out 10%, and I think every household in America can take a 10% cutback, okay? So what we can do, and if I thought that we could afford it, if I thought we were Cupertino or Palo Alto and we had a $500 million budget, I'd be throwing it away. But we don't. We sit here and we quibble over whether we're going to give our community grants people a 8% cost of living, or 2% $8,000 cost of living raise. We're going to be challenged again with that this year, and we're sitting here looking at these numbers like, I know we owe this town a library. I know that some of the money was maybe not allocated appropriately, but the fact is we couldn't build the 7,000 square feet, and we can't build the 12,800. And I know you have a motion on the floor, and I've already made my piece, so I'll let you do what you're going to do, and you're going to get ready to call the motion.
No, because $1 million does not make or break this city, and that's the truth, and you know it. And I know that just philosophically, it bothers you, but in the long term, in the life cycle of this building and in this event, we can look back on this, and if we don't get those 1,000 square feet now, we will never get them. This is the time to build the right-sized library.
Mike, I'm going to tell you, the last projects we've done, and I can put Steve on the spot here, we have drastically erred on estimating our projects.
I have faith in the people who have estimated this one because it's been done by people who I know and respect, and it is, I would say, when I look at the estimates, I would say they are too pessimistic. And yet, people who I respect have said to me, "No, Mike, it's really that bad," and they have done the right job, and they've come up with the right numbers, and they've built in the 10% contingency, and I have to say, I think they're right.
I have a question, Jamie, just on financing. Are there any other financing options? I know we have the emergency reserve. We have the contingency reserve. We have the stores funds or the equipment fund, and we have all these other funds. If we wanted to leave those there for that use and we wanted to borrow $1 million, what would that look like, and how would we pay that back? And what would we not do to take some funding, a smaller amount of funding from something else to pay that debt off?
Right. I mean, I think that that's the kind of thing that our finance director would work through with the finance advisory committee. That was the point that I tried to make about the conceptual funding models because you're exactly right. Let's say we were going to put $1 million in general fund. Say we were going to put $2 million in general fund. It might make more sense to borrow it than to use up existing fund balances if the interest rates were good, if the terms were right. So I don't have an answer for you. I mean, I think pretty quickly I can tell you, well, if you borrow $1 million for 10 years, we're going to be talking about $110,000, $120,000 a year, you know? That's pretty simple math.
Which would not be unheard of us to try to fit into our budget to try to pay back if we wanted to use some money for something else.
It could make more sense to do that than to use up all the fund balances, but do also understand that, you know, $120,000, $130,000 a year is about the cost of a CSO.
Right.
And we're going to be faced with decisions down the road about how we're going to keep the service levels that we have today up unless there's some changes at CalPERS, which I think is highly unlikely. And so ongoing obligations like that make me nervous. But again, I think the decision, as we've stressed before, is really, let's pick a size and a budget target, and then we'll develop a financing model to get to.
I'm just trying to see if there's any way we can make it unanimous.
The finance advisory committee will bring back recommendations because there are a lot of ways to skin this cat, and we can't make it as cut and dry as, "Do you want a library or do you want a police officer?" That's the wrong way to go, and it is the worst flair to send up.
And I don't want to make that comparison. I just, you know, that's what that is. It's, you know, I wouldn't mind borrowing. I don't like to borrow money particularly, but I wouldn't mind doing it if it would be less of a pain to our city services and everything else that we're doing to do it that way. So I just wanted to look at it. John?
Thank you, Ed, for bringing up those points. Ed is one of the reasons why this town has managed its money and its budget the way it has, and it's one reason why this town has been able to provide the services that it has. And in one sense, this town is partially a very relaxed place, a place we're proud of. And speaking about a place we're proud of, Marilyn? Thank you. Marilyn?
Marilyn, could you please sit down while we're having this public discussion? It's distracting when you're walking around and passing out papers and stuff.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Marilyn.
Yeah. I know. You can walk around outside if you like.
Okay. So we're proud of this town for a lot of other reasons, too, and Mike is sort of getting to that point. When we do something that unites the community, that brings us together, something that we're all proud of, that elevates this town. The other thing is to think about how this place is going to be used. So I've been to a couple of libraries that the architect has designed, and today I went to talk to the Marina Library, and I asked the librarian, and he just had this big smile on his face. And he said, "It's unbelievable. I love this place." And he started going through all the different activities where the community came in, kids came in, did school projects, and he just went on and on. And he said, "There is one thing I didn't quite get," and he takes me into the corner, there's two plugs in the wall. He said, "I finally found out this is where the cafe is going to be," and he was really excited about that. So I really want to have a place that Capitola is proud of, and that's why I'm going to vote for the option that I seconded.
Any other discussion or comments? Gee, I hate to have a split vote on this.
Yep.
It does. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Councilmember Vertrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Brotthorff?
No.
Mayor Harland?
No. I'm sorry, everyone, that was a split vote. That would have been nice if that was everybody together, but that's a difference in philosophy, but...
We're still smiling.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, thank you very much.
I would like to make one last comment.
Yes.
So in talking with the various people that are involved in the library board, I've been hearing a rise in enthusiasm, and I heard that the original contribution was starting at 250, and without any arm twisting, it went up to 350. And I'm just wondering if this is going to go up a little bit higher because this is the way we are in Capitola, so thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a five-minute break.
Thank you. Nice try, Jacque, and I've been pushing him, too.
Thank you for the introduction. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm going to try to make this presentation rather brief in the interest of time, but if you want me to slow down or go back over anything, please let me know. So as you recall from the last meeting, the Wireless Ordinance update is before you, has several revisions, primarily updated to comply with existing state and federal law. We've also established preferred sites and locations where facilities, where we prefer them to be located. We've established four tiers of permit review, which incentivizes the well-designed facilities which are in appropriate locations through a streamlined permitting process. All facilities under the new ordinance would require to be concealed, and we are providing a height exception because one does not exist today, and variance findings are often difficult to make. So very briefly, the preferred sites in order were sites on a city-owned parcel, co-locations in right-of-way, and then outside the right-of-way, base stations, which is generally any type of facility other than a tower, and then towers in the right-of-way and then outside the right-of-way. In terms of location in order, industrial zones are most preferred, followed by commercial zones, and then all other non-residential zones. And then we do break that up further by residential zones such that properties that may be zone residential but don't have actual residents living on them would be preferred over those that are occupied. I talked about the four tiers of facilities. The first tier, this would be the most streamlined process. These would be for the Section 6409 permits that we discussed at the last meeting. The city is preempted largely by federal law from really regulating or denying these types of facilities. So it's an over-the-counter type permit, no public hearing, no appeal allowance, and that's all embedded in federal law. The pictures on the right kind of give you an example of what type of facility these tiers would cover. So for Tier Two, these would apply to concealed facade and building-mounted facilities or concealed pole-mounted facilities in the right-of-way only in commercial or industrial zones. These would be an administrative permit. Site would be posted. Director would give the decision. There would not be a public hearing, but there would be an appeal process available to the public. The Tier Three, these would be building and facade-mounted facilities and unconcealed pole-mounted facilities in commercial, industrial zones for the unconcealed building facades, and then mixed-use visitor-serving community facilities if it's a concealed building facade. All unconcealed poles in the right-of-way would fall under this category. These would be minor use permits. Site would be posted. We would mail postcards for these, director decisions, and under this process, a member of the public could request a public hearing, wouldn't be an appeal, no fee involved. They could simply ask for it to go into hearing, and we would accommodate. And then, of course, there would be an appeal allowance with that as well. And then finally, Tier Four, this is the process we're all familiar with today. It's a conditional use permit. This would apply to new towers. These pictures depict various tower designs. Any facility in a residential zone, whether it be concealed or unconcealed, a tower or facade-mounted facility would all need a conditional use permit. And as you're aware, CUPs do require us to put notice in the paper, mail out postcards. They're considered by the planning commission and have full appeal rights. At the last meeting, you did continue with the direction that we look at the city of Monterey's recent wireless ordinance and give us a comparison and contrasting. Both the city attorney and staff has taken a look at it. In summary, we concluded that the ordinances before you today is much more comprehensive and detailed, and I think has a lot more legal protections in it. But fundamentally, the ordinance are largely the same. The most significant difference that I found in it was in Monterey, all wireless facilities require a conditional use permit regardless of its location or design. As you recall, the planning commission encouraged a more tiered process so that they're not put in a position of making decisions on aesthetics when typically the public is most interested in health effects, which they are preempted from considering. Other than that, our ordinance does have findings for 6409 permits, permit revocation, alternative sites analysis. These are all tools and standards that we think are important and would recommend that we keep in there. However, Monterey did not have those standards and requirements in their ordinances. So with that, the planning commission did recommend that the council approve the general plan update EIR addendum and adopt a proposed wireless ordinance. Staff concurs with that recommendation and would also request that you authorize us to submit the ordinance to the coastal commission for certification. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes, Mike?
For a Tier Four, which requires a conditional use permit, should we be able to deny it?
You would be able to deny it, but you couldn't do so based upon its location or perceived health effects. You could base on aesthetics, or if you were unconvinced that the applicant failed to demonstrate that there was an alternative site, there was a preferred location, you could send them back, deny it, and tell them they need to look at a different site.
But a Tier Four can exist in an R1 zone, could it not?
It could.
So I could have a monopole in a residential zone and not be able to deny it?
You could deny it if you could, I think you would have to find that the carrier did not demonstrate that it was infeasible for them to meet their coverage objectives by placing a facility in a better location, a less visually obtrusive design. So there would be ways to do it, and I think we'd work the city attorney to make sure that you made legally defensible findings if that was your desire.
Because what I did find in Monterey was they have a lot of language about the visuals, and it seems to be their way to keep them from the view corridor and the R1 zones. In addition, they have the ability to keep it away from the airport. They have a lot of airport regulations in theirs, which we lost our airport years ago, so what can I say? But if we were to cite something, you know, local coastal-wise, saying that any monopole in the view corridor, which is basically our city, is unsightly, and we could deny it, would we have firm ground?
I think you would, and I might defer to the city attorney, I think you would have grounds for denial if you could make a determination at a significant visual effect and there were no feasible alternatives to provide your coverage objectives without creating a reduced visual effect. And I've seen some cases like this where a carrier would come in with a large monopole, naked, no attempt at stealthing the facility, and agencies successfully pushed back and said, "Instead of putting up one 80-foot tower, why don't you put up four or five smaller towers to propagate your communications?"
Is there any advantage to requiring the CUP for all tiers?
The only advantage would be that everything would go before the planning commission, and the planning commission would make those decisions.
I'm going to speak. I was at the planning commission meeting, and so if I get this wrong, Rich, please, please let me know. I think the planning commission's concern was being asked to weigh in on projects where their discretion was limited. And you understand the position, you've been decision-makers for a long time, most of you, and you understand, sitting up there and being told, "You don't have any choice. You have to vote for this," and it's an uncomfortable position to be in. And I think the planning commission was simply responding to that and saying, "Look, if we're going to be asked to exercise our discretion, we want to actually have discretion in the case and not be told, you know, you don't have a choice."
Would they not have discretion for the visual component because that's what we are allowed to rule on?
So they do, but I would bring you back to the case on the subway that was the subject of the litigation where, by and large, it was a concealed facility. So from an aesthetic perspective, I think it would be very difficult to deny it strictly on that basis. And we got into the position we did, trying to make those questionable findings, at least alleged questionable findings.
Thank you.
So I think when something's hidden really well and it's aesthetically copacetic with our ordinance, I think we do have to tread lightly on denying a project.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions right now? All right, so we have the recommended action. We'll hear from the public in a minute, but we're being asked tonight to adopt the addendum to the general plan update environmental impact report, introduce an ordinance to amend the municipal code, Chapter 17.98, wireless communications facilities, and to adopt the attached resolution directing the city manager to submit an amendment to the city of Capitola Local Coastal Program to the California Coastal Commission for certification. Any questions about that? All right. Any other, no other questions? Well, then, we'll hear from the public now, and I'm going to give everybody one minute because we have another big item on our agenda we have to deal with next. So please come up. Please come up, and you have one minute. Excuse me, you have one minute, please. We have another item that we need to get to, and we don't want to be here all night.
We're waiting hours.
I know you have, but we've heard the same thing over and over again, so one minute should give you a good chance to tell us again what you'd like to say.
I don't think this is legal procedure. I know you don't like me, Stephanie.
I like you very much, Marilyn. That's why I called you last week at home to talk to you.
That's why, let's see, what time is it now?
You have one minute, and you're losing your time.
No, this is not proper.
Please go on. Please continue and speak to us.
This is what we have. This says, "You've never done this to anyone else, ever."
But we keep hearing the same thing over and over again, Marilyn. It's not useful.
Never. That's very prejudicial, very prejudicial. There's a problem here. This says capitalism stops at nothing, and what we have is corporate capitalism taking over everything in our country, and the telecom industry is one of them, bullying cities and locative officials, telling you what to do, and establishing their toxic sites that you know are biologically damaging, you know, Verizon's surveillance, violating our right to be safe in our person and property. And to go along with that is to condemn the citizenry to ill health and violation of human rights and zoning rights. And the publication Birds Bees and Mankind Destroy Nature by Electro Smog documents the harm to wildlife, of which Capitola prides itself on the birds and migrating creatures.
Very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Thank you very much. We appreciate hearing from you.
And I'm going to leave you a copy of the county health officer's report, health risks associated with smart meters and other wireless technology from Dr. Namcon. associated with smart meters and other wireless technology, from Dr. Namcon of January 24th, 2012, and she said, "The only ones that can protect people from involuntary exposure to this harm are elected officials." You need to do that.
Congress needs to do that. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Marilyn, and I'm a Capitola resident. I'm really frightened and disappointed that this is going to go through despite everyone's objections and even knowledge of the harm. When I was working as a nurse, I took care of quite a few people that worked in the tech industry and had brain tumors, and I always wondered, is this because they've been in such close contact with all the electronic industry? So it won't matter in the long run how much art and culture and libraries we have here if it's all contaminated with radiation. It would be a beautiful place, but so toxic.
Thank you. I want you to know, we hear you, we don't have the ability to do anything about that. We don't have the ability to deny these projects because of that, any health effects. Congress took that ability away from us. So happy to hear your concerns, but we can't do anything about it.
That's the news for me.
Yes, please. Good evening.
But that's the role of government, to do something about it. This is a public health issue, and there were many angry people here last year that showed up, the community was opposed to this cell tower, and we wanted no change in the ordinance, this is all for the convenience of Verizon and the telecom companies. It's another example of cowering to these very powerful threat of lawsuit Verizon that have very deep pockets, and it's destroying our country, it's destroying our democracy. We have no choice, no voice anymore. The science is out there, it's very, very dangerous, and this is 24/7 toxic trespass. It's not the science that's in doubt and that must be proven valid, it's you, our government, and passing the buck to somebody else, the state reps, someone else, federal, change the laws, we've all been trying that, that's why you're the last choice for us of protection. There is no good choice, there is no solution. You are all we have to protect ourselves from these monsters, and it's profit number one, and the hell with everybody else. And it's got to stop, it's wrong, and it trickles down from Washington, look at the Trump mobster gang. It's, nobody cares about anyone anymore.
Thank you very much for your comments.
You're not helping us.
I know, I know, we don't have the ability to help you, and I'm sorry about that, I'm sorry you come here to express your frustration. I think that Jimmy Panetta in Congress and the other Congress members is where this action lies, and so that's where, I know, but we cannot help you, that's the bottom line, we cannot help you with these, Congress can, Congress can do it, and Jimmy Panetta is open to that and will listen to that, and you may get something there. Any other comments from council members?
Yeah, this is, as our city council told us two weeks ago, he worked with the California League of Cities, which we're a member of, and this is an organization that covers all of California, it's composed of the various cities in every single county. And all across the state, this is apparently an issue that's come to their attention, and they've crafted what they consider the best options, and that's what you have here before you. It's not what you want. It's not what a lot of people want. But know that a lot of people have the same concerns that you do, and what our mayor just said is absolutely true, this is a federal-level issue, and we appreciate you coming here, believe me. So that's all I'm going to say, except that also thank our council and planning, looking into the fact that it was brought up last time that Monterey might have had a better option that could have improved the situation, and we did. So thank you, Tony, and staff for doing that.
Anyone want to make a motion? We have three recommendations.
Motion to adopt staff recommendation.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item is a zoning code update status report. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Before you this evening, I have an update on the zoning code. It's been a while since we've been before you, I think the last meeting was in late October, early November, to talk about the zoning code update. I'm going to give you a brief overview of where we've been. In 2014, there were seven stakeholder meetings to kick off the zoning code update. Then in 2015, we published the issues and options report, of which we had 16 meetings between the planning commission and also at city council. In 2016, we had a rather busy year, the draft was released in February, and then we had 14 planning commission meetings in which we went over the draft and received edits, and that was followed by seven city council meetings in which we received your revisions to the planning commission edits. So here we are, and it's 2017, on January 9th, you each received a copy of our new updated zoning code. In the new release, all of your edits are included from your hard work last year in 2016. How this is set up in the most up-to-date code, we've got it's color-coordinated, that the planning commission edits are incorporated into the document, they're in black. The staff, as we went through this and were inputting your edits, we found a few just minor references that were off and other tweaks that needed minor edits, and then we also updated, your edits are in red, so those are the, you had also found some just simple edits as well as big policy changes that took place in this document. It should also be noted, brought up, that the coastal commission edits are also included within the staff edits, when you get to the coastal chapters, and whenever you see references to the coastal, that's typically the coastal commission edits that they provided us. We didn't incorporate all edits that they provided, only the non-policy issues or requests. So in combination with the updated zoning code, we put together the remaining zoning code issues document, and that was also published on January 9th. This is a guide for the upcoming public meetings, so it actually is in the packet that you have this evening as attachment A, and if any of you would like a hard copy, I'm happy to print that off for you. Within this, the remaining zoning code issues are nine discussion topics, and I'm going to briefly go over those nine discussion topics. These are discussion topics that, when before you, it was either a major policy change to what was in the first draft, or items that as we went through the zoning code, we realized it really needs a little more work to make sure that this is the best draft possible for publication and to work out some of the remaining issues. So the first topic is the zoning code map and also the TRO boundary, that's the nightly rental boundary. So under topic one, there's a list of all the properties that were rezoned within the new zoning map, and then also we want to bring back that discussion on the short-term vacation rentals. And, yes.
Are we going to discuss any of this tonight?
So this evening, I'll give you just an overview of where we're at as of today, and where, but we will be coming back to you for discussion on all of these items after the planning commission reviews the most recent update.
Okay, so if any comments on the overlay area, save it for later, not for tonight. Correct.
Correct, yeah. If you feel, though, that we made an error in any of our edits, please feel free to reach out and contact me so that we can make sure to bring forth your ideas correctly to the planning commission when they're going through them. So zoning map and TRO boundary is first, that will be actually looked at at the February 2nd meeting coming up for planning commission next week. The next issue is height exceptions in the mixed-use village, those are amended during your review, and there's a couple, we'd like to relook at those to make sure we get this absolutely right. Also involved is height exceptions citywide, we want to look at how the height exceptions that are allowed citywide, how they are going to work with the height exceptions of the individual codes, whether or not those are in addition to the new allowances or not in addition to. Next is land use changes in the regional commercials, the new regional commercial zone, there were some tweaks that occurred regarding multifamily homes in the regional commercial, and mixed use and exactly where a commercial has to be located within mixed use, that was a major policy change, taking out the multifamily, so I'd like to bring that back to planning commission and make sure that we got that correct and follows the recommendation of city council. Next is office uses in the regional commercial, there were also major changes to existing policies there to not allow new office space in the regional commercial on the first floor, so that's another one we want to highlight to the planning commission. The coastal commission edits, when we brought those to you, we did not get a recommendation on those, the recommendation was to bring it back to planning commission, make sure they're on the same page with the non-policy recommendations of staff, and so that's what we're doing there, bring it back to the planning commission, then you'll have another look at those. Seven is setbacks, as we went through the setbacks of both planning commission and city council, there was quite a variety of what we allowed and how many feet we allowed certain encroachments from the property. So this we went through and we kind of put themes together of, for example, entertainment features such as hot tubs, outdoor kitchens, fire pits, kind of looking at the numbers that were provided during the edits and saying, let's standardize this, it seems to be a louder impact, so it should have a greater setback, and they varied from three to eight feet, so I think we landed on five, and that would be our suggestion going forward, but just organizing those setbacks and trying to create standards there. And then also, we included the accessory structure setbacks, just so that it's clear how they fall into this category. Next is the accessory dwelling units, previously referred to as the secondary dwelling units. The state came out with new legislation for ADUs, or accessory dwelling units, and so we've updated that entire chapter to comply with the state law, and we'll be bringing that, introducing that to the planning commission, and then we'll have an update on that for you as well. And last is non-conforming structures, this has been modified heavily through the planning commission and city council process. At the time that you reviewed the non-conforming, I don't think it was written as straightforward as we'd like it and easily comprehensible by the public. So we've gone through and we have tried to clarify the language there, and also provide examples of, for each stage of non-conforming, what would be allowed, and provide an example for that. So those are the nine topics. Following this hearing, if there's, we had put in the staff report, any suggestions you have of other topics you'd like to see revisited, you're welcome to provide those to me now, or we can, I'm happy to take, you can send me an email, and we'll make sure to add those to the list for things to be revisited when we come before you, or if you'd like the planning commission to take a look at any topics as well. So next steps. Currently, both planning commission and city council have the updated code. The planning commission is going to go through those nine topics, and then they'll make a recommendation to the city council, once we've gotten all their input, to initiate the public review. Next, we'll bring their suggestions to the city council, you'll review the pending issues, so those nine issues, and then, once you've reviewed the nine issues and given us clear direction, we'll ask you to initiate the public review. When we were before you, I want to say in late October, it was very clear that the desire to have a 60-day public review process prior to any formal recommendation by planning commission or adoption by city council. So once we have that recommendation, we'll update the code, put all the revisions in there, and it won't be redlined anymore, it'll be a code that's ready to go out to the public, and we'll publish that for 60 days for public review. The planning commission will receive the updated code, they will take public comment during the public hearings, and any suggested revisions will place into that code, and then they'll make a recommendation to the city council, and then the city council will review the updated code, receive public comment, provide us with any suggested edits, and then we'll, at that point, you'll be adopting the new code. And from there, it then goes on to the coastal commission. So this is my last slide, the planning commission is going to begin reviewing the zoning maps during the February 2nd meeting, then February 16th, we have a special meeting scheduled for 6:00 PM, in which we hope to get through the majority of the remaining items, and then the city council review will follow planning commission shortly after. So if we have an additional meeting in March with planning commission, then you can look forward to seeing us shortly after, but we may get through it all in February.
So the planning commission's going to meet on the 16th?
Yes.
The SoCal Creek Water District meets in here in that room, and they televise their meetings, so.
That's Tuesday night.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a Tuesday night. Why do I keep writing on Thursday?
They meet on Tuesday, we meet on Thursday.
Okay, wrote it on the wrong day, okay.
So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Will we be reviewing all the coastal commission responses, because there seem to be many, many, many of them?
You will be reviewing the suggestions that we have in the document, if you'd like, we can bring all of their edits as a separate attachment, but these are the ones we felt could be adopted without any issue of changing any policy.
Do you see any issues with them passing RLCP, not addressing the other issues that you don't think we can address?
I do think we're going to get comments from, once we submit this to the coastal commission, I'm sure they'll return our draft with edits.
So we should wait until we get their final comments and not go over all their preliminary comments? This is our hearing.
My recommendation would be that we adopt an ordinance that we want, and we give that to the coastal commission and let them react to it, and then we would come back to the council and say, here's the sticking points, here's the things that we were unsuccessful to negotiate to an agreement, at least what we think the council would accept. And I do expect there's going to be some very significant points of disagreement, particularly with managed retreat. I think they'd like us to start setting sunset dates for the village, and I don't imagine that's something that Capitola is going to accept.
Sunset dates for us abandoning the village?
Yes.
I love those guys. I just love them.
That would be the last movie set when they blow up the hang.
Disappear.
I'm sure. They haven't heard about the wall.
Did the wall, that's right.
Do you think there's, do you think there's going to be a need for a joint meeting between us? Because I always think there's a need for a joint meeting. We can learn from them, they can learn from us, we can be on the same page, we can talk about the same things.
The coastal commission?
No, 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 planning commission.
Planning commission?
Planning commission.
Potentially.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Back to the planning commission.
Planning commission's doable, coastal commission, I don't think so.
No, I'm sorry.
You know, the idea was that if we get some issues where there's clear discord between the city council and planning commission, and we're having a difficult time, that a joint meeting would probably be a good idea.
If there's even a hint of it, let's do it, because I've been really frustrated that we haven't had more meetings, and we don't know what they're talking about unless you watch their meetings, which we all do hopefully, but I mean, just to discuss things with them and hear their point of view and what their experience has been, and for them to hear.
Are you? My perception is that the commission and the council have been pretty close, there are, you know, a number of issues where you took a slightly different approach, but most often, when we went back to them, said the city council saw things differently, they understood and accepted it. I don't, you know, maybe they should speak to that, but that was in my perception.
I was looking forward to that coastal commission meeting.
I'm sorry.
I was all in on that. I wasn't. It would never happen, but I was interested.
Okay, well anyway, let's keep it in mind that if it would be, you know, helpful and useful to move forward, rather than they meet, we meet, they meet, we meet, you know, let's just meet together and resolve it.
We can still have one of those meetings, you can call it.
Yeah. So maybe when we get to a certain point where there's something, you know, whether it's ADUs or whatever, that there might be some sticking points. I just think it's, we just need to work better together this year with the planning commission, is closer together.
A question about the chart you gave us, I found a couple of inconsistencies, and just the one that jumped out at me right away was, 502 Beulah is a mobile home zone?
It was a mobile home zone, that is.
Was it really?
Because of the Lower Pecoville parking lot.
So it was included in that zone for lower Pacifico?
It never had identity, Mike. It never had identity. That's the
Star
We're going, we're going to straighten that one out.
Good.
Trust me. Good.
You can rezone that house on Claire's. All that junk's back in there in that house. It's still being used as a construction yard.
The house that's been abandoned?
No, that was sold, next to the, not the driveway that goes next to the bank. There's, that whole, and that house sold, and they're using that again for industrial storage with trucks and concrete and porta-potties and.
The construction site, Whitlow Construction?
Whitlow site, yeah.
So it's, it's, I believe it's still zoned residential, it's zoned residential today, it's proposed a state residential. They're illegal non-conforming use. The research we've done, they've been operating before the city was incorporated there, there was some kind of site. So they're, they're in allowed use today, but if they ever discontinue, the property would have to go to some type of residential allowed use.
Grand Pauli didn't since before we were a city. Wow. I can identify with that.
They need to clean that up. That is really an eyesore, and for the people that live behind that in those apartments, they have to look at that junkyard every day. It's not fair, and the people that live next door. Nobody's going to buy that house next door. The value is, you know, in the toilet. I mean, not in the toilet, everything in Capitola is very valuable, but, but, but I mean, I mean, it's a, it's a problem area. It's a pro, it's a problem area. So if we can do anything about it, I mean, this would be not the time to, you know, rezone. I brought it up before, it could be an opportunity site for housing, and the house next door to it too. So we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
And if council members see other areas too that you want to take a look at for, you know, rezoning or something like that, you know, bring, bring it up. Jac?
Nothing that fits that criteria.
Yeah. So, so I brought up the ADU for the state thing, so that's been incorporated, that's what you're saying? Okay. And then I'd like to, they, the state also mentioned the junior ADUs, so I'd like to have a look at that when we have the discussion.
Great. Can put that on the list.
So we're going to have extra meetings to deal with this?
Well, I think at this point, we haven't determined what the council's schedule's going to be to address this.
I think we're going to need to, because our, our calendars are going to be fairly full with some things. We might need a few extra meetings.
We might. I entirely agree. I mean, we've been very busy. Thank goodness we had that 105 Sacramento continue this evening. Then upcoming meetings look really busy as well. So if we have as full a schedule upcoming, when we get into the planning commi, the zoning hearings, we're going to have to have special meetings. There was a time last year where we had a lighter spell, so we'll have to play it by ear and see where, see where we end up. But I do anticipate there will be at least one special meeting.
Okay. Anything else, Rich?
All right.
Any other comments for council members? Recommended action is to receive the staff presentation, provide direction on any additional zoning topics that should be discussed in upcoming meetings, which we can do tonight, and certainly we can email Rich if you think of anything else as you're going through it. So this is just to receive information, no action required, no motion needed. So that takes us to the end of our agenda, and could we look at our calendar and see if people might be free for lunch? Kristen, you work, so do you have any days when you, when you don't, you could take off for lunch?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm working actually on trying to set up a, a full day that I'll just take off and do meetings all day.
Yeah.
So yeah, I can look into that, but I also have a set lunch break time when I'm permitted to do such things.
Be hard to get to Capitola.
It's personal time.
You're out of volume, Rich.
I'm thinking of, of like.
Santa Cruz.
Well, you're out of Santa Cruz.
I'm thinking like Friday the 17th, or Friday the 20th, February 24th.
Will that not have to be noticed as a public?
I was going to say, I would, I would like guidance from the.
We will notice it as a regular meeting.
And the Brown Act.
Yeah, and if members of the public want to come, they can sit on. Sitting on my couch, and I was just going to fix everybody lunch and sit and visit and have a little, little team building.
It, it has to be in a, it has to be in a public place, and it has to be ADA accessible.
Right. My house is ADA accessible.
Here it is.
Yeah.
But I don't want here. I want somewhere else.
We'll review that. If it's a problem, I'll, I'll contact the council, but the question is whether or not a, a private residence isn't, isn't appropriate venue for a city council meeting.
Well, I tell you.
A retreat.
Yeah, it's a retreat.
We've actually had one before, but that doesn't mean it, that doesn't mean it was.
I'd like to go to Paharo.
Proper, totally proper.
Pacific Grove does it too, so it's not an unusual thing.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll.
I'll have an alternate suggestion.
And, and if it's a problem under the Brown Act, I'll let you know.
Okay, either of those dates not good for anybody? What was Friday, Friday, February 17th or Friday the 24th? For, you know, like hour, hour and a half lunch?
17th is good, and the 24th is not.
Friday the 17th is fine with me, but the 24th is not.
Okay, 17th good for everybody?
Yes.
Oh, it's not.
Not good for you.
Nope.
How about, how about Friday, March 3rd?
Friday, March 3rd works for me.
We could do it another day of the week, but I just thought that might be.
Did you like March 3rd over there?
I can do March 3rd.
Okay.